Thank you, please be seated. Will the clerk please read item four?
Item four, proclamation, National African American History Month.
Okay, so I'm just gonna read this here from the dais. We're gonna celebrate proclamation recognizing and celebrating February 2019 as National African American History Month in Lakewood. Whereas National African American History Month is an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of African Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on future generations. And whereas American history brims with the stories of African Americans who forever changed their communities and our country. And whereas recognizes inspirational leaders such as Annie Turnbow Malone, Mary McLeod Bethune, and Booker T. Washington. And whereas African Americans have exemplified heroism, patriotism, and have given people of all backgrounds confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their own dreams. And whereas National African American History Month is a call to each and every citizen of our great land to reflect on the cultural, scientific, political, and economic contributions of African Americans which are woven throughout American society. And whereas the city of Lakewood supports National African American History Month and the learning of our past in order to build a better and more prosperous future for all Americans. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of City of Lakewood, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, by virtue of the authority vested me do hereby proclaim recognizing and celebrating February 2019 as National African American History Month in the city of Lakewood, Colorado. So, this is always a special opportunity for us to celebrate and recognize and a unique story, I think I've shared this before, but we have a, an incredible African American woman in our community, and she actually came to Colorado because she wanted to be a nurse, and she grew up in Texas and was not able to go to nursing school. And so, special district elections, I think they're in May, March, May, April. I was over at the fire district and she was there voting, and she's mentioned that she never misses an election. Because growing up, when she finally was able to vote in Texas, they had a poll tax that she was not able to afford. Once they got rid of the poll tax, they then moved it to only one polling place within her county, which then further disenfranchised them because they could not get there. So she said, it's so special for her to have that opportunity to vote and be a part of the community, and I thought I'd mention that, and that same couple was just recognized by the President of the United States for all their wonderful works in, in our community, and that's Mr. and Mrs. Cook. So I just wanted to share that as we celebrate African American History Month. Thank you. Clerk, please read item five.
Item five, presentation, Head Start Training for the Governing Body.
Good evening. We're gonna be training.
Good evening, how's everyone doing this evening?
Good.
I'm Sherri Petersen, I'm the Head Start Administrator for the Head Start and Early Head Start Program. And I just wanna tell you what an honor it is to come before you every year and be able to share all the wonderful collabora-
Can you ta- yes, thank you.
To share what a wonderful collaboration we have in the city with our Head Start Program. And this will be our fifth year, our last year for our Head Start Grant, and then we'll make a new application, those happen every five years. So I just want to take this opportunity to do our annual board training and show you how we work within the city. My notes. As of each year, I have the opportunity to share some highlights, as well as train on our overarching responsibilities that the city council and mayor provide for our program. As a Head Start grantee, we're required to engage in an annual training as stated in the Head Start Act of 2007. The city council serves as our Head Start governing board. The mayor appoints three city council representatives to serve on our advisory committee. These members are appointed by the mayor and they provide program oversight. Our current members are Charlie Abel, Sharon Vincent, and Barb Franks. And as a quick overview of the other group that we work with is our policy council. The policy council consists of at least one parent from each classroom, two community representatives, and one past parent. And then we also have our early Head Start parents who are in our home-based program that do home visitation. So, in general, the advisory committee and the policy committee, policy council really review and make recommendations for the program direction and for our quality improvement. This frame shows detailed responsibilities of each group that work together to provide a strong working oversight and support for the Head Start Grant, all of which are the governing body, the policy council, and the management staff. I would like to just highlight some of the shared responsibilities so you see what it looks like on a day-to-day basis. For governing body and policy council, they would take action on hiring and terminating the Head Start Director and other lead staff. They would also have established impasse procedures. For the governing body and the management staff, you provide legal oversight which ensure compliance of federal laws, state, tribal, and local laws. For the governing body, policy council, and management staff, you help provide leadership and strategic direction. We do this through an annual self-assessment, and also through developing and planning and evaluating the Head Start Program on an annual basis. Again, primarily assigned to the advisory committee is our work on safeguarding federal funds. The program follows all city guidelines and participates in the annual audit. Our transparency provides detailed information regarding all transactions, and they're distributed to both the advisory committee and the policy council. We also ensure that funds are used for the intended purposes, and we regularly review budget and expense reports, and we also question expenses when needed. Other general duties as assigned to the committee include: compliance of federal regulations, receive and review correspondence from our regional office, review the annual audit report for the agency, and work with our policy council, our group of program parents, and our community representatives. The Head Start Program is designed to serve families at or below 100% of poverty. As we enter year five of our five-year grant cycle, we'll continue to provide a quality-driven program for 110 children. We do this through four physical locations throughout the city, and we also have home-based services for our early Head Start families, which are prenatal moms through age three. And here is our budget and what it looks like for next year. We have our total amount from the federal grant, and then we also have what's called our non-federal share or match. This is, happens because we have volunteers, we use those funds, people donate supplies to the program, the city provides facilities and resources, and all this works together for our total program budget, a little over $1,006,000 for next year. Just a couple of our program highlights. The program is on track to complete all of the goals that we established within the five years, and we're very proud of that. We're also entering, we also are very proud to talk about our workforce and how they provide such quality classroom experiences, and they've been, done a great job in increasing parental involvement over these last five years. Our family community support remains strong with the ability to support families in goal-setting, support with resources and education, training, review opportunities for job attainment, work with challenges around safe and stable housing, and support families in being a part of our community, which we're very proud of because we see them in the workforce, and when we do that, we can retain them in the city of Lakewood, which is one of our So, to bring it very quickly to a close, I want to thank you for your participation and support of our program, and we're very excited to continue our early childhood services for the fifth year and right for a new opportunity for the next five years.
Well, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate you and, and the wonderful job you do for the kiddos in our community that are able to take care of that, but it's also more than our kids, it goes into the whole family. So, are there any questions or comments, committee members? Mayor Protem?
As always, it's a pleasure to serve on a committee with Sherri and our Head Start staff is just top-notch. One of the key components, though, we ran head-on into, a week before last when we met with the policy committee, the parents, and there was a gentleman there with his two or three children. He's a single father, works long hours, takes such pride in his children, and he shows up for every policy board meeting and has volunteered to do it all over again next year. It's the kind of participation we get from our parents, and that along with the staff are the keys to the success of the program. So, thank you very much.
We really appreciate the parents and what they bring to our program, and they help drive our services. You know, where do we need to improve? Where are we doing strong? So, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
See you next year.
See you. Actually, we'll, yes, we'll see you in the spring, though. Yeah, that's always a good one. All right, next up is public comment on non-agenda items, and it's blank, which means nobody has signed up to speak on non-agenda items. Anybody? All right, I'll close public comment, and I'll go into, that's a record.
Yeah.
So-
This is the Lakewood City Council meeting?
Well, Ms. Hodgson, we are way ahead of time, so you have the next 20 minutes to yourself.
Oh, good. Oh, lucky me. And I actually have a short report anticipating a very long public comment session, but let's start. Very recently, Chief McCaskey and I met with District Attorney Peter Weir, as well as Deputy District Attorney Candace Coolidge, and Ray Fleer, who's working for the Sheriff's Department. Do you remember, they came and spoke about the Porchlight Family Justice Center, I think, just a couple of weeks ago? And the commitment we made to you was that we'd be having a deeper dive with them, and we did that, and you will hear a financial ask in the upcoming weeks. That hasn't been identified specifically yet, and I know that team is speaking with all of the other cities as well, but before April 1, you, we will have a request to assist in the funding and to be a partner with the Porchlight Program, so I just wanted to give you that heads-up. Also, in the police department, we're anticipating seven new community service officers starting in March. So, the hiring is almost complete, and we're lucky, we're gonna have these folks onboard pretty soon, which is good. You'll remember that you approved four of these positions last year in the 2000, in the 2019 budget process, and the others are a result of attrition, or people who have left. So we have seven coming onboard, which is good. Lakewood is, the police department is also hosting their 54th session of the Citizen Police Academy, beginning in March, the 54th. And you might wonder, well, we're only turning 50 years old, how is that possible? And the answer is, we hold more than one of these academies per year. So we're running our 54th. It starts on March 11th, it's an 11-week course, and if anyone's interested in getting involved, there's still room to sign up, so the information is on the website. So it's the Citizen Police Academy, and it's interesting, and everyone I've talked to that have gone through that academy have enjoyed it. So pass that along, please. This has been announced once, but I wanted to announce it one more time. Our own Vanessa Zarate, in Economic Development, received the Young Professional of the Year Award, and that's quite an honor. And she is an employee in our Economic Development Department, and we've just watched her grow and blossom right in front of our eyes. So congratulations to Vanessa. A couple of follow-ups. At our annual planning session, at the very end of January, we talked about the city shops and some of the significant needs that we have in the, in the city shops. So we decided as a group that we will have a study session to discuss those needs, as well as a tour. So we've scheduled the tour for May 6th, we're hoping to have nice weather, May 6th, so you'll be wearing boots and jeans, and we'll walk through the city shops, and you'll get an up-close-and-personal experience at the shops. And finally, we had, as a result of a request for council action, we had a study session, oh, I don't know, six weeks ago, I think, about construction noise limitations near residential uses, and that's been scheduled. So first reading will be April 8th, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Fantastic, well done. All right. Yeah, consent. So I believe, next up is the Consent Agenda. The use of the Consent Agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first-reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature, members of the public will have an opportunity and moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First-reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first-reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the dates set tonight by the city council. Any council member may request an item on the Consent Agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. Will the clerk please read the Consent Agenda of the Record?
The Consent Agenda consists of items 8 through 13. Item 8, Resolution 2009-7 endorsing the 2019-2020 Head Start Grant Application for the purpose of submitting a request to the federal government for grant funds available to provide Head Start and Early Head Start Programs. Item 9, Resolution 2019-8 establishing non-cigarette tobacco product retailers licensing fees for the city of Lakewood. Item 10, Ordinance O-2019-6 for vacating a portion of the right-of-way for Allison Street, a portion of the alley within Block 78 Lakewood, and that portion of said Block 78 described in Book 772, page 424, which vacated portions of right-of-way are legally described and depicted in Exhibit A to this ordinance. Item 11, Ordinance O-2019-7 repealing and replacing Chapter 5.38 of the Lakewood Municipal Code as it pertains to the Lakewood Liquor Licensing Authority. Ordin- Item 12, Ordinance O-2019-8 amending the Lakewood zoning ordinance. Item 13, approving minutes of the city council meetings, city council meeting of January 14, 2019.
Thank you. I would like to open the public hearing on any of the resolutions. Nobody has indicated a desire to speak on the resolutions. All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Is that accurate? Was there someone that wanted to speak? Okay, I'll close public comment, and, okay, so we, public comments over. Yeah, thanks, all right. Yep. Nobody signed up, believe it or not. So, I'll ask for a motion, please, on the Consent Agenda.
Mayor Paul, I move for approval of the council minutes. Order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the Consent Agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Right, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Please cast your votes. And the Consent Agenda passes, 11 ayes, zero nays. Will the clerk please read items 14 and 15 into the record?
Item 14, Ordinance O-2019-2, amending Title V of the Lakewood Municipal Code to add a new Chapter 5.56 establishing a lodging facility licensing program. Item 15, Resolution 2019-9 establishing lodging licensing fees for the city of Lakewood.
Great, thank you. So I would like to invite Sergeant John Ellis down, who is gonna give us a presentation And, and as he's coming down, just so the community knows, we had a thorough presentation a few months ago, and now this is a follow-up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I think she's pulling up the, we have a short presentation, and we'll go from there, Well, good evening, everyone, good to see you again. Thanks for having us again, and we're gonna go through, so, give you an evolution since our initial study session where we went over everything and kind of what's happened. We've had the chance to talk to a lot of you, answer questions specifically, and then what we kind of did is, we said, okay, there's enough questions that ring true from enough people, that we're gonna kind of put it into a second presentation. We'll go through all that, and then we're open for any other questions you might have, and we'll answer them to the best of our abilities. So, we'll start from there, so. All right, so, we kind of wanted to go back because I think one thing that we were losing track of a little, of what's the goal of the lodging license? Why are we here? So, really, it's to reduce criminal activity at Lakewood's lodging facilities, and it's not to close businesses. We're not, we're not out to, to shut places down, what we're here to try and do is improve the safety and the quality of life at these locations and the surrounding neighborhoods. One thing we truly believe is, like any business, responsibility lies with the owners and the managers. You know, their business practices really determine who they rent to and what types of conduct are allowed on the premises. What we really want to reinforce is that we believe good management practices can reduce the risk to the public and also the use of public safety services, and that sometimes public safety services are used as de facto security for some of these places, and where we could be better used for other services in the community. Also, those facilities with that high amount of criminal activity are a danger to the public, we can't forget that, that they create a public nuisance, and they're a drain on resources that should be used by all of the city, and just not these locations that continuously are using them again and again and again. So, that's really why we're looking at doing this. So, you should have a red-line copy of the ordinance from first to now, but we also wanted to go through some of those changes. So, one of them was with the definitions, the call for service. We initially had submitted where it included the fire and EMS calls, so, health calls. Obviously, we don't want to include those. There was some concern like, well, if I have a, if I have a care facility next to my hotel and, you know, elderly residents are using that hotel with their families and they have heart attacks, does that count against me? No, not at all. We are solely looking at public safety, law enforcement calls for service here. We changed the definition of a lodging facility too a little bit. One thing we wanted to make sure of is that we understand what a hotel is, and how this would differ from like short-term rentals or apartments. Because we know that some locations do rent some of their rooms out, sometimes two, three, four months, six months, so there was a fear that the definition might exclude those, so we just made it say, if you have any room available for rent for less than a 30-day period, it counts. The investigation piece, we added in there, we want to make sure it's clear that investigations are allowed to be part of this process. We have to go in and actually look at how the place is run, look at how, how things are managed, to make smart decisions on our recommendations. Because again, our recommendations are designed to improve the business, and if we can't go in and investigate and see what's wrong, how are we supposed to recommend answers to that problem? So that's why investigation exists. New applications, this is, this is, this is an important one, and this came up as a question from you previously, was, okay, so we have a facility, and it's, it's being run poorly, and that owner loses their license, what, what prevents them from just selling it to a buddy? And now they get a brand-new license that they get to use again for two or three years, and this could just continue, you know, if a brother sells it to a sister, sells it to a cousin. So, the answer here is that now, if you're, if you're looking at buying a, a location or taking over a location that has a license in violation, you have to come up with a plan for how to reduce that, and once your license is granted, you have six months to make that happen. And if you don't, that could invoke a hearing right away. So that way, we're kind of, kind of holding them on probation, if you will, where we're saying, you gotta prove to us that the changes we're concerned about are being made. The final decision in the non-renewal piece, the final decision was, there was some confusion as to the language of the dates, like, well, if we send it on this date, and it's mailed in six days, and then they have four days to do it, we just cleaned that up to make it really easy for everyone to understand. And then the non-renewal piece as well, so if we're, if we're up for non-renewal, what are your options there? So, so instead of being called in for a hearing, if, if the licensing authority reviews your application for renewal and chooses not to renew it due to various issues, how you would go about fixing that? So that's, that's the changes that we've seen since then, and it should be apparent with your red-line and then your newest version. All right, so then what we did, like I said, really what this second reading for us about is answering the questions you have. We really want to, to make you feel comfortable with, that you know this ordinance in and out, and that you know as much as we do. So, what I did, and, and what the group did, is we basically took our PowerPoint and we put up the questions, and then I'll kind of give you guys the answers, and, and we'll go from there. So, one question that was asked was, can we add a motel or hotel representative to be part of the hearing and have type of input into any sanctions that are imposed? In answering to that, we, we mimicked this exactly off of our licensing authority model for our liquor licenses. And in that, in that situation, you have, on one side, the licensing authority with the inspectors and the deputy city attorney, and then on the other side, you have the owner of the establishment or the license, and then you have the third party, which is the key to this process truly being fair and due process, and that is the hearing officer. And the hearing officer is hired by the city, but like our municipal judges, we hold them to be accountable, to be fair and unbiased when they're making their decisions. So, in answer to that, if we added someone to it, it would kind of take that balance out. It would be like, in a, in a court proceeding, if you added someone who wasn't involved in the case, but on one side or the other to the process, it just wouldn't maintain that balance. So in answer to that question, we believe we have the balance in place by having that neutral third party making the ultimate decision, and, and, and we feel that we're adequate there. So that was the one question. Another one was, is there anything we can do about a person staying 28 days, and then the motel has to go through the eviction process? There's not much we can do except best business practices, because the issue is based on Colorado law. So when we review Colorado law through the defrauding and inkeep ordinance and, and residence law, residential law and all that, what we found is that, one thing the courts look at is how long has been someone staying there? How long have they been staying there? And if they've been staying for 30 days or longer, they tend to side with the tenant and say that it's a residency. So that, and that can include in motels, because they're gonna start saying, well, I've been here for over a month, you know, I've changed my address to get mail here, you know, I, that kind of thing. They view it as residency, and that's not, that's not our call, per se. We can't, we can't write a law that usurps that. So when it comes to the, to how do we avoid that issue, the best answer is good management practices, and, and we've recommended this to hotels before where we say, you can rent to someone for no more than 28 days, and then they have to leave for a minimum of six months, or they have to leave for a minimum of 90 days. And you can't do the shell game where you move them from room 102 to room 206 to room 305, because they're still considered a resident of that complex or that building. What we're saying is they have to move off-site. And then that way, they can't use their time in residence alone as a justification to require eviction. So, if we have someone who's stayed in a motel for 21 days, we are allowed, we can go in and say, hey, I know you've been here for three weeks, but you haven't paid for the last two days, there's no lease in place, it's time to move along. After that 30-day period, we don't have that option anymore. We have to say it's a civil remedy and you have to go seek a civil eviction. So, that's why, in that case, we really don't have that, but what we can do is, we can teach that. One of the things I want to point out about our ordinance and our goal is, we do want to start educating better, and we think that by having a license in place and kind of getting people to the table together, we can teach them those things. Because I think a lot of it is, they just don't know. Also, one thing too, sometimes, is sometimes you have an attorney for an establishment reviewing the law differently than we do. But the problem is, as a police department, we're required to view it based on Colorado law. But the problem is, as a police department, we're required to view it based on Colorado law, what are our legal advisors recommend, and kind of best industry standards. So, we can't just side with someone because they say, well, my attorney says this. We have to go based on what we all agree on, so. That's the answer to that one. Next, can we require establishments to post rules and regulations signs notifying guests of illegal behavior, and that there's a zero-tolerance policy for this kind of activity? Absolutely. We could require it from the start. We could say, your license requires that you post, you know, signs with your rules and regulations, et cetera. We could also, instead, because one thing I like about this licensing ordinance is, you're not required to do much unless you're in violation, right? That's one thing I like about it, because if you have hotels in the city that are doing a great job of managing themselves, we really don't need a management more than they are, right? I mean, we don't want to micromanage all these places. So, instead, we could say, signage is only required if you have an excessive number of calls, or if the license, your license has been brought up for a suspension. Where signs, we have recommended signs, our crime-free hotel motel, I'm sorry, our crime-free multi-housing program, signs are an integrated part of that, and it's designed to teach people, this apartment complex is friends with the police department. We don't allow criminal activity here, right? That's been successful. But one thing we have to keep in mind with signs is, everyday life signs are disregarded. My mother disregards the speed limit signs, right? Oh, hopefully, she's not watching. But, as we all know from when RTD went in, no smoking signs, right? People, how many of you have watched someone smoke next to a no-smoking sign? But we would hardly call this the criminal element, right? Now imagine what the prostitute, the drug dealer, the guy who assaults his wife thinks about signs, right? So, signs are only as powerful as the programs and the people that back them up. All right, next on here. The sanction of having to hire off-duty police officers seems like a conflict of interest with the police department. We agree. So, we took that out. We said it's more reasonable to say, hey, how about private security? You need to hire private security. The reason we had thought about that is, extra duty is something common we do here, and it's helped a lot of places when they need it. But we can understand if it was a compelled thing by a license, that comes off as a conflict of interest. So, we've removed that completely, and we, we heard you on that, and we agree, so. Next one, the best practice guide says to allow police to look at a motel registry when this has been ruled unconstitutional in a California case. So, the question is, our best practice guide recommends you share the registry with us and keep one, but now case law says that you can't force them. So, there's the key distinction. Our best practice guideline that went out to all the hotels, that's a recommendation of best practices. That's not something we're requiring, right? So, for example, in our licensing model, we can require them to keep certain records. We can require them to keep, if there's a car involved, what kind of car it is. If there's guests over 18, names of all those people, including any IDs they have, et cetera, right? The difference, the key difference to understand is, we can't compel them to share those with us anytime or on a regular basis. We can compel the management of a database, but we can seek a warrant for it if we need it. So, there's that constitutional protection. Now, on the other hand, when we've worked with crime-free housing locations, and when we've worked with motels that do grant us access, we find it's mutually beneficial, and because it's a consent-based thing, they can revoke consent at any time. It's a decision each business can make for their best practices, right? So, a lot of hotels have found, if they do share it with us, we're running names and finding people with warrants, and they don't want people with warrants on their property either, that kind of thing. So, so the key thing to keep in mind is, we can compel the main, the maintenance of a list, we cannot compel the sharing of that list. All right. The next one, can we legally tell hotel operators they cannot rent to anyone with a local address? This one's, this one's a little bit more in-depth, but the, the overall answer is this. Motel staff have the right to refuse service to anyone, as long as they do not discriminate against a protected class. And we know what those protected classes are, right? Gender, sexual orientation, religion, race, ethnicity, that kind of thing. They are allowed to discriminate outside that, as long as they can show that what decisions they make are not based on one of those protected class items. So, one thing we teach in our crime-free hotel, or crime-free multi-housing class, is you can discriminate against someone's criminal background. You, you can run, even businesses, they can hire based on that, right? So, with that concept in mind, what they've shown generally is, those who have a local address and are staying in a motel have a higher incident of committing crime. And I think the lay term where you'd go, that makes sense, is, if you live three blocks away or two miles away, what are you doing there? Right? That's kind of the thought process. So, it's been shown that they commit crime at a higher rate than out-of-town guests, because out-of-town guests usually have a more legitimate purpose for staying in a hotel. So, although we can't compel it, like, we can't say in the license, you must only do this, we could recommend it as a sanction based on known experience and best practices, and say, you should not rent to out-of-town, or in-town guests, because it's been proven. So, that's the answer on that one. Can we come up with a cleanliness or renovation award to give the hotel that significantly improves their property? Absolutely. You know, the goal of this program is to decrease crime and disorder. We can consider an award or other designation. We could have like, a best improved hotel award, right? Or we could have a, you know, you, under the limit, you know what I mean? Like, hey, you've successfully maintained a very good record, right? We could do that. The other thing is, we've been looking at other kind of innovative options. Since the CAT team would kind of be the driver of the bus on this, working with the hotels, we recently met with economic development, and one thing we talked to him about is, hey, could we look at possibly a, like a grant program? Since economic development dollars come from lodging license fee, or lodging fees, could we say, hey, if, if, if a hotel's in violation, and the licensing authority requires them to install $10,000 worth of security product, could they come and get like, a 50/50 matching grant from the city? And although that's not set in stone yet, that's just some of the ideas we're talking about, and economic development was receptive to the idea and said, we like it. And I think that shows one way that we're really trying to, if we're willing to invest the city's money back into the, the community that we're trying to license, that shows that we're not trying to close these places down, if we're willing to invest money in them, when we're trying to help them get better. So, that's an example. So, I'd take it one step further, again, more than just an award, maybe some active support to get them where you want them to be. All right. All right, so this is, I think, a big one for, for most of you in here, so we'll take some time going over this. It's the only question that has a graph, or a chart, right? So, that, that must mean it's important. There's a concern about hotel owners' calls for police service being held against them. What's the PD's position on this? So, one thing we did, because we wanted to dive into the data a little more, is we decided to take five of the hotels in the city, and we wanted to look at, okay, what do their numbers look like with the calls from the management included, and the staff, and what does it look like without them included? To give you an idea of, of a comparison. One thing that is hard about this is, we have to find a way to track who staff is at any given time, right? As we know, overturning employees, you know, Suzie B. could call in in January, but by the time we run the numbers, she no longer works there, et cetera, et cetera. But for this snapshot, we did go around to each of these motels and request, who is working in 2017? What were their names? And then we ran the data. So, when we ran the data, here's what we came up with. The hotel, the second one down, that actually had the lowest calls for service ratio, you can see it was only .22 calls. They, they literally had, in the year, had 30 police calls for service despite having a room count of 135 rooms. So, that hotel had the highest employee-generated calls, right? 37%, but it's still only 37% of the calls. Now, if we look at the rest of the hotels, the rest of the hotels would all be in that, with the old call-for-service model, or with the calls for service with staff included. With that group, they would all be in violation. In that case, the highest one only called three out of 10 times. So, out of every 10 calls, management was only called three of those times. Another example, if you look up there, is the, the one that says employee-generated 20%, that top one. We decided to dig even farther, and we said, okay, if they called one out of five times, what were they calling about? And what we found is, in those one out of five calls, for every two out of 10 calls they do, 50% of them were management calls, like, someone stayed over their time limit, or someone's not obeying the rules, or someone's just wandered onto the property and won't leave. And one thing we like to point out is, again, hiring the right management staff, hiring security if necessary, if you have a big facility, you could remove 50% of even their calls to the police department just by changing your management practices. I think one other thing to, to mention, too, is, one reason that we really are interested in keeping them in there is we want to hold them accountable for those management practices. And the best example I could give in comparison is a bar. If a bar was constantly over-serving their clientele, but they were calling us, we would still want to hold them accountable for the calls that they called us on, right? We'd still want to say, hey, I know you called us about that bar fight, but you also let everyone drink until they were way too intoxicated. So, we need to talk about that, right? So, I think we have to remember that there's some onus on the owner, and that's the reason we're interested in keeping those calls in. Let me see if there's anything else I want to add on that one. All right. The last thing I'll mention on that, and it's to the right there, it says, the other thing to keep in mind is, the way we set this up is, we asked you as a council, what number do you feel is appropriate? And you said, well, 40% sounds good. Let's, let's move forward with a 40% threshold. Even if we removed the calls for service from staff, there would still be 40% of the hotels in that threshold. So, regardless, there's gonna be that number, since we have a finite number of hotels, 40% is gonna be in there, whether or not we include the staff calls or not. The only people it would change for are maybe those ones who are right on the bubble. It's like, if we take out their one out, or their two out of 10 calls, maybe they would just squeak under the number. But the, the ones at the high end, or even the moderate to high end, would still be there, regardless. So. And any of these questions, I know you probably have questions about these questions, so I'll go through it, and then we can come right back to them, however you want to do it. All right. Can we develop a partnership with the CAT team and the hotels, so they don't feel like we're trying to force them out? Absolutely. That's one thing we want to do. What I mentioned in the first presentation is, remember that voluntariness piece? Voluntariness rarely causes the desired result. I talked to one of our former SLU agents, Dutch Smith, who a lot of you know. And I asked Dutch, hey, tell me about what you guys did back in 2016, when you were trying to do a crime-free class. And he said, Agent Michelle DeLeon and another partner took all the hotels north of Sixth Avenue, and I took all the ones south of Sixth Avenue, and we made sure to invite all of them to this crime-free housing class. So, they put in that time to try and get them to come to a voluntary class. It doesn't work. It didn't work. So, we need to understand that at some point, everyone has to have a little skin in the game to get them to want to come and, and work together, right? Now, the flip side to that is, we want to include that working together. We, we definitely want to. That's why for the first year, if you're over the limit, there is no mandatory sanctions or no hearings, right? If we find that your, your calls for service are too high, the only mandatory thing you have to do is sit down with me, right, and talk about it, and go over, hey, what are your concerns? Because one thing I learned, we had, we had the opportunity, Commander, the Commander and I had the opportunity to meet with one of the motel owners, and it was enlightening. Because we were at the table together, and he said, let me tell you some of the details that you may not know, and I would be glad to help you identify solutions. That's the kind of back and forth we need, and, and now is the only time we've actually seen that start to occur. So, that's why absolutely we can develop a partnership, and absolutely, we, we want them to know, we're not trying to force them out. We're just trying to force them to be accountable for the calls that we need them to be accountable for. All right, there's a feeling amongst some city, some on-city council that this is an effort by the city to redevelop West Colfax by shutting down these hotels, and the police department is the mechanism to do this. What are your thoughts? So, we've, like I said, these are all, these are all anonymous questions. Although the department, we've long desired for a way to reduce crime and disorder. I can tell you, I had a sergeant who's been with us for, I think, three decades now. He was my training sergeant, or he was an agent who taught my academy 13 years ago. He came to me and said, this is gonna be huge, like, this is gonna make a difference. So, we have for a long time desired for, to find a way to reduce crime and disorder in our city. One thing to keep in mind, though, is, we didn't start researching this until you came to us and asked us to. So, our intent's never to redevelop somewhere. We were, we were asked, please try and find a solution to these problems at these hotels, so we started looking. The other thing we need to keep in mind is, we chose this model because we want to try and help them succeed. The possibility of closure only comes after years of work, and numerous hearings, and attempts to do sanctions that aren't punitive. We, we purposely did not create a fine schedule for this. We're not, other cities fine people, they give them tickets and say, you owe us 10 grand. They, you know, do this, that, and the other, right? We don't have that in here. Our goal is, hey, you need to meet with us, you need to come up with better management practices, and it's time to start getting your locks in better shape, it's time to start getting some cameras on the backside where no one can see, and it's time to start having more personnel here to watch your building, right? So, that, again, isn't like, a attempt to close anyone down. All sanctions impose just reasonable business practices, and we start with the minor, less impactful ones, right? If we go in and say, hey, would you keep a better registry? And we need you to improve the lighting, because it's not really, it doesn't feel safe here when you walk at night, right? And we need you to start doing certain other things. That's the beginning, right? We don't get to the concepts of like, credit card-only sales, and you must have security. That comes years into it. Like, if we've tried everything else and nothing's working. So, we have it, we have a, a scale of how we're gonna approach this. And finally, again, the sanctions are still administered through hearings. There's still that third party who's neutral, who has to review this and go, yes, I agree, or no, I don't. And they have the final say. So, I think, especially on this question, what I would say is, Lakewood police agents, we protect and serve all of Lakewood. We'll provide excellent service, whether it's at a classic Colfax motel or a brand-new apartment complex. We'll give the same level of service. So, to us, it doesn't matter the makeup, all we care about is those people that are involved are in it like we are to reduce crime and disorder and try and keep everyone safe. So. All right, can significant criminal act be removed, or the number of significant criminal acts be increased? So, it went revoke a license. This one deserves a lot of discussion, because I think there's some misunderstanding of this one. So, significant criminal act was designed for those acts that are so heinous or so problematic that we don't want to wait a year to address it, right? So, an example I would give is, let's say, so we have federal task forces who do human trafficking, right? And they go through, and every, a few times a year, they come in and they do these major operations to solve big problems. If we found a hotel that the owner was complicit in this human trafficking, right? We found out that the backside of the motel had been, had been a place for prostitution for people who are trafficked against their will, we don't want to wait a year to bring them up to a licensing hearing. We want to, to have a hearing now, right? So, that hearing would take place, but they still get that benefit of having that neutral third party look at it, and we still have to prove that they had knowledge and that their, the licensee had involvement in this, right? Or their business practices had involvement. I think one thing to keep in mind for the significant criminal act piece is, there's kind of two hurdles you have to cross. The, the first one is, if, when a significant criminal act comes across our desk, the inspectors, which would be the CAT team, and the deputy city attorney, will review it. If we don't see a nexus to the hotel itself, we're not gonna recommend a hearing. Because if we're like, well, that could happen to anyone, that's not a reason to have a hearing. Second, even if we decide we want to have a hearing, it still goes to hearing. So, that third, neutral third party, we have to present our case and say, here's why it's relevant, and they have to agree. And I know the fear is, well, it's in the language, but if we didn't have it, then we couldn't use it at all. So, that's what I'd say about significant criminal act, is keep in mind that it's designed for those instances where you would be calling us going, oh, my God, what happened? Please do something. So. One other thing I'll say about that real quick is, the operation of the lodging facility is such, there's another piece in there that I, that I talked to one of you about today, where it says, the operation of the lodging facility is such that it's negatively impacted the health, safety, or welfare of its guests, or businesses, or neighboring community. And that one, again, sounds kind of vague, so it kind of gives some question marks, right? What does that mean? How would that be invoked? What the intent here is, is one part of our inspections is that we'd invite health and sanitation inspectors, fire code inspectors, all these groups that you would want checking on your hotels, to the table, and they would come with us on the inspections. If they go in and find a massive outbreak of some sort of disease, or they find that it's infested with, you name it, and it's a risk to the entire place, that's why we'd want to be able to bring up a hearing, if we find something like that. If, or, for example, if there is criminal activity where, as council, you get these calls all the time, where the neighbors are tired of people running from the hotel, and the cops, and having canines entering their backyard behind the fences, as the bad guys jump in the fence over and over again, and it just seems like this place has been a problem for that, right? And, and you have your communities surrounding it that are trying to just grow up in Lakewood that are being constantly bombarded with this kind of thing. That's what that's there for. That's what that's there for. But again, it's for those times, it's that higher bar that we'd be using that. So I'll end on a closing for a minute, and then I'll open it up for questions. So, two things. I think in closing, we want to remember, we were asked by city council to find solutions to public safety prom posed by hotels and motels in our city. And we truly believe this licensing ordinance is that solution. A lot of you know me as the sergeant from the CAT team, and a lot of you have seen the benefits that we bring. I've worked with each of you in different cases where you've seen that innovative thinking and new ideas are really the way to get things done, right? Well, and one of my favorite things is, usually what gets referred to the CAT team is things that seem like they have no answer. When you sit there and scratch your head and go, I don't know what to do on this one. The chief gets it, and he scratches his head and goes, oh boy, this one's been coming up for 10 years, what do we do? That comes to my team, right? But even with my team, and the innovation, the dedication, the ingenuity all my guys have, and that of the greater Lakewood Police Department, it can only take you so far if you don't have the tools. And I really believe here, this is the tool to make that change. And I think the last bullet is what I'll end on, and that is that you have the right to be concerned. We have had a trainer coming in, teaching our in-services, and she works for a Jefferson County multi-discipline team for human trafficking. And she said, "Many of the child victims we get at our human trafficking when we're reviewing these cases, they've either stayed at or been trafficked from hotels along West Colfax." And I think that's a powerful thing because that's someone coming in from the outside and telling us that. So, all right, we'll open it up.
So, I'm gonna...
Yeah, absolutely.
If there's anything else to add, I'm going to open the public hearing. And then we'll get to questions and comments by council. So, this will open the public hearing on items 14 and 15. So, 14 is the ordinance, and 15 is the lodging license fees. And again, nobody has signed up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on either one of these two topics? All right, I will close public comment, and I'll ask for a motion on... For clarification, Mr. Cox, we'll have to do these one at a time for motions. So, we'll start with the ordinance.
Yeah.
I move for the adoption of ordinance 02019-2 on second and final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So let's start with a couple of either questions or comments. We have quite a few. I'm going to start with Counselor Vincent, who started this whole process.
Sorry about that. Just thank you for answering those questions. Those were questions that I had also heard too, from other council members. And it was beginning to be out there that this was just about West Colfax, but you're actually licensing all of the hotels and motels. And I know one good example of somebody who's cooperated and has changed what their perception was, that's in a different area, is the Motel 6, that's there on Wadsworth. And they're now an example of somebody who's worked with the police, and is now very good and a good neighbor. I also want to share people too, there were some questions that this is something against homeless folks, and it's not. It's not about that at all. It's just another tool, I think, in the toolbox to maybe help you all. So it's not just West Colfax that's getting licensed, it's everybody in the city. So, thank you.
Counselor Skilling?
I had some questions on that topic of the, as you pointed out, that chilling effect that we talked about at the study session, that we don't want to make it so that nobody's calling for service. And you did touch on that as one of the bigger issues. I've got two points on that. One, council may want to consider that in 5.55.080A3, when we're talking about the discipline on the license, there could be a happy medium where you use that as a mitigating factor that could be considered. We could actually spell that out, that it will be used as a mitigating factor at the hearing. If they're over the 1.89, say that they're at 2, and they can come in and say, well, if you take out the employee-initiated calls, and then dig deeper, and say, well, some percentage of those were for civil remedies, overstaying, or something like that, then that should be either used as a mitigating, and I don't know where you want to take that, that would be up for a discussion point, whether that takes you below the 1.89. Or, to your point, if we say, well, that's a mitigating factor, but we need to talk about then the management policy. So maybe if we added that in that section as a mitigating factor, and that was 5.55.080A3, another way you could get at the same issue is under the definition sections of calls for service, under B1A, where it talks about if there's a call for service comes out, you could add the word criminal to that to distinguish it from civil. One thing that I'm thinking of, and maybe this isn't a good example, but I think we want to encourage folks that if they've got a civil issue, somebody's overstaying, and they think that that's going to be an issue. They're not comfortable with their employee knocking on the door and saying, you gotta go. And they're being proactive about that. If they think there's going to be a dispute, I probably don't want to disincentivize them from calling the police and saying, we have an issue, this could be something that we may need your help. So maybe to that point about civil versus criminal, that's another way to get at it. I'd prefer the first option that I mentioned as it being a mitigating factor. I think that probably covers it all. But those were just the two points I was thinking of when you were mentioning that question. The first one was on 5.55.080 under A3. There's a series of points there, and you could just add it and say, employee-originated calls, if that's the right verbiage, will be, shall be used as a mitigating factor, or could be considered as a mitigating factor at the hearing. And maybe that solves it. The second point that I made maybe isn't as good as the first.
So if I might, if you'd like to proceed with that, if you could fill out a motion form, to that extent, I don't know if there's any comment on that, Chief?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I don't have any, I'm not sure I have a response for that. The hearing officer is going to be an independent, hearing officer is going to look at these. And I don't know if that, personally, I don't know if it needs to be quantified in the ordinance. I think that makes it difficult for a hearing officer. I mean, these are independent hearing officers. They can look at that, and we can present information. The hotel that goes through this hearing can also present information that they're making these calls as well. And I guess I'd refer back to what Sergeant Alish also said. To me, a bar is a good example. If a bar has business practices where they over-serve customers and allow them to drive under the influence, cause accidents, have bar fights, have various other activities at the bar, they do all of these things and they still call us. It doesn't negate the fact that they're responsible for their business practices. So, I guess I don't know if I feel like, personally, that it needs to be in the ordinance. I think it'll be something that will be considered by the hearing officer. And then I think again, and I said this at the study session, and I'll say with this, and I think Sergeant Alish showed it tonight with statistics, these hotels aren't calling us. They're really not calling us. So I don't know where the disincentive lies for them. I mean, I think we've shown that, you know, I think it was three out of 10 sometimes where they're calling us, out of 10 calls, so. But if that's council's decision, we'll be glad to make that happen.
Thank you, Chief. Any follow-up to that, or?
No, and I, you know, I was bringing that up as part of our discussion point. That's why I'd said, throw it out there as in response to what was correctly identified as a big point that we discussed at the study session. I will say thank you to the Chief and to Kathy Hudson both for answering a lot of questions that I had on some of these issues. That one, we didn't discuss today because, actually, during the presentation, that came to mind. So thank you both for speaking with me on these issues.
Mayor Protam Abel?
Good presentation, well-thought-out. It is a longstanding problem. I think as Councilwoman Vincent pointed out with the Motel 6 analogy, if you work with our officers and you really want to clean up your act, things happen, and they happen quickly. I think if you're not that concerned, then we have a program here that will take care of it. And hopefully, we'll become more concerned as time goes on. I would like to make one comment about not renting to people with local addresses. You know, if you have your major renovations going on in your home, do you have to stay in Wheat Ridge? Also, aside from prostitution, and in the hopes of keeping this a G-rated meeting, there are other reasons that local folks might want to go to a motel. So, I am not sure I would like to, I would like to see that portion of it removed. I know there are nefarious folks who use it, but, you know, we don't want to get innocent folks trapped into a situation where they have to leave town for a few hours, or a few days.
Sure, Counsel. That was under the best practices guide, if I believe. It's not actually part of the ordinance. It would just be something that the hearing officer could determine based on a case-by-case basis. So it's not actually part of the ordinance.
Okay. Still concerned that that might be behavior, when your floors are being finished, you have to go to Wheat Ridge. There could be worse things.
Sergeant?
All right, yeah, I think one thing I'd add to that is, keep in mind that this will be amongst a bevy of sanctioning concepts, and they would be viewed from, you know, least intrusive to most intrusive. So, it may be that the top two or three hotels that still can't seem to get their numbers down, we recommend something like that. Whereas the rest of them would not have that same issue. So, it would never become something where all of Lakewood would suddenly not be able to rent to local guests. It just may be the occasional hotel. And that's, like I said, one small possible sanction recommendation compared to all the other ones that are out there, so.
In that case, never mind. I like the whole package. Thank you.
You can come stay at my house when you do your floors.
No, thank you.
Okay, let's continue with a couple of questions or comments. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. This is greatly needed. And I'm pleased that we have a reasonable ordinance to help our community, and particularly one that I view that works with the hotel owners, and is not punitive. That's a big deal to me. Dan, I know I approached you two or three years ago about this, and I know you've been working on it and giving it thought, and running it up and down the legal team as well. So it's taken a lot of time. I appreciate that you met with me last week and answered a lot of questions. And John, thank you. We've spent time together on this as well. And I think that you've answered all of my questions very nicely. I do have a couple of items I just want to mention. I had the opportunity to meet with one of the motel owners. And he was awesome, to be honest with you. I was appreciative that he gave me his time, he was honest, and he was very insightful from a different perspective, to be honest with you, that I had not even understood before. During that time, it became apparent to me that some of the folks that live in these have lived there for many, many months. And these are de facto transitional housing. How is that going to be handled with this? Are they going to be put in a position where they've got to tell these folks that have been there for many months, actually, the gentleman is in the audience, and he could perhaps even give us some insight onto how long some have stayed? I just would like to have some peace of mind on how that's going to be handled, please.
Sure, Counselor Johnson, thank you. We are acutely aware of some of the, as you say, it is de facto transitional housing for a lot of people. And really, we don't want to change that. But what I think Sergeant Alish mentioned, we are a year to two years before any type of really difficult sanctions are going to, would even potentially close a building or a facility that was in violation of this ordinance. And we don't anticipate that that's really going to be an outcome. Our hope is that we'll be able to work with most of these motels to change business practices so that we never, ever have to get to that level of a sanction where we're actually evicting, or the hotel has to shut down. I think, you know, I know in Columbus and some of those other communities that have enacted this, you know, we won't just go in, if a hearing officer says, okay, you've been given so many chances, your conduct or your business practices are so egregious, we're going to close you down. We're not just going to go in that next day and close them down. You know, Columbus, they give them, you know, like a 30 to 60-day time period where there's some time before the business actually shuts down. And I would anticipate that would be the same with us, if we ever got to that point. So we're not going to just be throwing people out on the streets and that they have no place to go. And there are plenty of other establishments in Lakewood where they can go and rent, or in other communities where they can go and rent too. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but...
That's helpful. I'm extremely appreciative that there were some needed changes in this that does not use a stick approach. And that, in which we are talking with the motel owners, giving them the opportunity to remediate problems, that's really the way this should be. And I'm very grateful that there are no fines. I think that's the right step. I like the idea that this is a partnership, and that there's going to be increased communication. Part of the conversation that I've had has been a feeling that there was a disconnect there with the police department. And I think this is really a step in the right direction. I think it's a brilliant idea that economic development is looking at some of the money, particularly since they get so much money from lodging, to actually help these folks out. For some of them, it's going to be a little hard press, perhaps. I don't know if part of this is fire extinguishers in every room, I don't know how that works. But certainly with the cameras, all of that kind of thing. I think that's a brilliant idea. I love the idea of awards. I always like to see people given recognition when they've done something right. I like the idea that it's on a gradual scale to give people an opportunity. And I think that some of this perhaps has been patterned after in other cities. I know that Denver's got an ordinance, and hopefully, we've learned from them and pulled the good things out of what they've had, and kind of stayed away from some of the stuff that maybe wasn't working for them. Also, perhaps, this is an awesome starting point. I'd like to at least throw this out, that maybe we have a two-year look back to see how things are going, if something needs to be changed or tweaked, so we can get input not only from your perspective, but frankly, from the motels. Because it's very important to me that people get the message that we're not trying to close businesses. And I know that you're not, and so, I know that. You've been sincere about it, and I believe you. But maybe have a two-year look back, see how things are going, and, you know, if we're heading in the right direction with this. Thank you, I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And we will be very transparent. If this ordinance is passed, we're going to be very transparent in what's going on. And Sergeant Alish, I think you know how thorough he is. And I would anticipate Sergeant Alish being back in front of you, kind of giving you an update on where we're at and what we're doing. And actually, we definitely want to be very transparent in what's going on here. And also Sergeant Alish had an opportunity, and I'll, John, if you want to talk about your Denver visit, go ahead, please.
So, to your point, I think one thing to always do is not try and reinvent the wheel, right? And sometimes we can learn the best from... And sometimes we can learn the best from other people's successes and sometimes their failures. So, Commander Perry reached out to Denver and their lieutenant who runs their hotel licensing. I reached out to him and we were invited two weeks ago on a Thursday to go out to one of their inspections. Now, they do it a little differently, but it was kind of an amazing process to watch because, one, they're very thorough. Two, we got to see some of the successes. We got to see some of the failures, too. I'll tell you, this hotel was riddled with signs that says, "Don't do this, don't do that." But they were doing it for the third year in a row and they were back there. I'll also say, though, that we had a city councilman from Denver present for the inspection. And that shows something pretty cool if a city councilman is willing to come out and be a part of it. And I had a chance to talk to him and I said, "Yeah, we're looking at something similar. What do you think?" And he was vehemently in support of it. Absolutely. He was like, you know what? This is one of the best things we've done to help deal with some of these chronic problem locations. And that was a good enough endorsement for me. I walked away, coming back. I came back to the chief and my team and I said, "I think we might have a winner here." So, that was a really great chance to get out there. So...
I'm especially appreciative that you understand and recognize that sometimes things happen behind closed doors, that a motel owner has no idea what it is. And that they cannot be penalized for something that they're unaware of. And I appreciate that. It sounds to me like with the independent hearing officer, if it gets to that point, that things like that can be taken into consideration. Due process for everybody. So, thank you. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Counselor Labir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say, thanks for the presentation. I'm really excited about seeing this lodging license. We're, Chair, both Counselor Vincent and I are both from Ward 2, which I think is overly represented on some of these problem areas. So, I'm excited to see some, you know, an opportunity to make a difference in that realm. But I was just curious, I was taking a look at Section 5.55.080. And I was looking at Section B of that. And it mentions the authority shall impose mandatory restrictions on the license. And I'm just wondering, is that, do you guys just have discretion on that? Or is this ordinance enabling, is this enabling discretion on that? Or do we have specific things we're allowing here?
So, the way we set this up, one thing we want to do is recognize that changing an ordinance takes time and energy and you all being involved. So, instead of having every sanction written into the ordinance, we're going to have a sanctioning guideline set that the hearing officer would use. So, it's kind of like their rulebook of, you know, from least invasive to most invasive of the types of sanctions that could occur. We'll come up with that as a document for what we see as best practices and the things that would make the greatest change. The first level of discretion there will happen in that a conversation will be had between the inspectors, the CAT team, and our deputy city attorney. And we will recommend a set of sanctions. So, before anything else, it's what we think would work best. And that's where really having that relationship with each hotel comes into play. Because I think when we talk to the owners, we're going to ask them, "What do you think are the reasons you have so many calls?" We want to hear what they have to say. Because if they say, "Well, I think it's this, this, and this," maybe we can have one of the sanctions include something that would help a concern they have, right? The second piece to it is regardless of what we recommend, it's ultimately up to that third-party hearing officer to review the sanction guidelines and make decisions based on that. So, it's kind of like a toolbox and you just pick the tools out that make sense for the individual situation.
And then you'll develop that?
Yes.
Okay. Part of the reason I was thinking about that was because on our packet, it still has the officers will be hired, or it says, "Licensee must hire the officers," and it's still in that guideline. So, I didn't know if that was just, it hasn't been updated yet or...
Yeah, that hasn't been updated. So, again, those sanctions, that was just an example. The sanctioning guidelines is a document that has yet to be formulated. Did we? Our first sanctioning guideline set? Okay, so that would change in that one, then. I apologize.
Okay. Then I guess the only other thing I would add is just like Counselor Johnson, I would like to see an annual, well, potentially annually, but I know Counselor Johnson mentioned two years of just reviewing the effectiveness of the ordinance to see if there might be changes that we might need to make that are stronger or weaker or something to that effect. So, I think that would be an added thing for this council to look at. So, that's all I'd add. Thanks.
Counselor Gutwin?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, also just really want to thank you, not just for this presentation and all of the work that went into this, but for your bravery in the line of duty as we're talking about this issue. I just really appreciate all of you stepping up and putting yourselves in dangerous situations to keep us all safe. So, thank you. I'm excited about this. I think it's very well thought out and fair. And, you know, like many people have mentioned, making sure that there's a fair day in court, I think is really important. And then I just have a couple of questions. One is, could you explain again where the 1.89 level of service is coming from and why that's the right point for us?
Absolutely. So, where the 1.89 comes from is we took the 2017 data for calls for service from all of the hotels in the city. And then we ranked them for calls per service per room. So, the 1.89 represents calls per service per room, and that's the great equalizer. So, the thought there is, of course, a hotel that has 100 rooms is likely to have more calls than a hotel who has 15 rooms. So, what that does is that brings everyone down to a level playing field. Then what we did is we ranked them from highest number to lowest number. And in that first session with, the study session with you, what we did is we said, "Okay, it is not our decision what the right number should be. That's a public policy decision." So, we asked you, "What would you like to see kind of as a threshold for what's acceptable and what's not?" And you asked what we thought was good, and we thought 40% was good because we said, "Well, there, you have a couple of good things going for you." One, if 60% of the hotels in Lakewood are able to maintain this standard, the other 40 should be able to. That's a pretty fair and reasonable thought. And we gave some other examples. When you take that 40% line, that is 1.89. And the reason we have to stick with that is if we did 40% every year, it would be a changing metric. And then someone could say, "Well, I was only held the 1.89 last year. Now, you're holding me to 1.32? That's not fair." So, that's why we have to take a snapshot, make that determination, and then pick that number as part of the ordinance.
Great. And then my second question, this was addressed a little bit in the packet and a little bit more tonight, but about this chilling effect. And, you know, we certainly don't want to prevent anyone from calling when there's service needed. Could you, I think that part of what you were saying is that the hotel managers aren't necessarily the ones who are making most of these calls. It's actually the other guests or, you know, whoever else it may be. But could you explain a little bit more about, is that the main reason that you're not worried about it chilling? Is it because you think that they're not calling anyway or...
So, that, yes, Counselor, that's part of it, is they are not calling. So, I think that negates the chilling effect. But I also, as, we are trying to be very reasonable here. And if a hotel owner calls us, we're not going to, we're not just going to not show up. We're still going to respond and we're still going to take care of whatever action we need to take care of. But I think what we're trying to do is to show, tell them or show them business practices can influence their calls for service. So, for example, if, you know, if they're renting to somebody who, we've shown up at their hotel and arrested this person seven times for narcotics or prostitution or things like that. And this person rents a room and they call us again and we show up and arrest them again, I think what our point to the hotel is, stop renting to this person, you know? And so, I guess, and I think John may be able to answer this as well. We're not concerned about the chilling effect because there are so many calls. And we go to these motels in our city almost 3,000 times a year. So, there's a lot going on. But our hope is that we're reasonable and with a hearing officer, the hearing officer can say, "Look, you need to change your business practices. You can call the police if you want, but you need to change your business practices and quit renting to people that, you know, that show up and are the, you're creating a need for the police to be there." So, I don't, I don't know if that answers it. Or, John, I don't know if you want to expand on that?
I think one other reason to think about this way is this, when we looked at it, we found that, like we said, about 20 to 30% of the time generally in those five that we studied overall was them calling, was the hotels calling. So, if there's a chilling effect, yes, we may lose five, you know, 10% of that total, right? But on the other hand, if we don't include those, one of the things we're very careful about is, and what studies have shown, is you have to be careful about having police departments being your de facto privatized security. And so, what we don't want to do is, one of the things that happens is they say, "Well, I'll take a chance on this person because if it doesn't work, I know the cops are only a phone call away and they'll make my problem go away." And we need to change the attitude to say, "We don't want you accepting the risks." Because we need you to understand that. So, that's one reason. So, while the risk of the chilling effect is there, the benefits to keeping it in outweigh the negatives. And then also, I think I'd add too, one thing they recommend and that we would do is do spot checks with residents to make sure they're not giving recommendations of not calling. We want to make sure that residents are encouraged to call when they have a problem. And that'll be reflected in our reporting and our investigations.
Great. Thank you. That gives me a level of comfort. And I think for me too, having that level of calls, you know, we're setting a reasonable level. So, we're not saying you can't make any calls to the police department or you're going to lose your license. I mean, you have a significant number that you can make and still maintain the safety of your community. So, that's great. And I think that this is a point that for me, if we do move forward with the look back, that I would want to, you know, understand if you're seeing, if you're thinking that we are having a chilling effect and if we do need to make some changes around that. And then my last question is, if we do a look back, what is a reasonable amount of time for that to occur? And how much, I just want to understand how much time that's going to take and, you know, how long it's going to take us to get good data and that kind of question. So, I'm not sure who to direct that to.
And there's also been a motion that's going to be presented by Counselor Labir to offer a look back a year after the licenses have been promulgated. So, give you time to get everything issued and then a year after that.
And I think in our discussions, the key for us is about two to three years. Because we can definitely, as the chief said, I'm glad, and maybe you don't want to make this offer, I'm glad to come back yearly and give you an update like they do with other programs, right? I'm willing to give you a quick snapshot.
No, no?
No, the chief's saying no. So, disregard that. However, you know, a two to three, just because, like we said, that it would be different if the sanctions all occurred within a year. But we really don't know what the success is going to be until some of these play out, right? So, remember, if this is enacted, we won't even have our first sanction hearings until this time next year. The first year is all voluntary compliance. So, we really won't know much in that first year. So, I think two years at a minimum, three years, because that's when you would really start seeing some of these sanctions having an impact. So, that would be our recommendation. But obviously, as the chief said before, whatever you decide, we're completely with.
Great. Thank you. And again, I just want to thank you so much. And I think this is going to go a long way in keeping our community safe. So, thank you.
Counselor Royball?
There he is. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick follow-up questions. First of all, thank you guys again for meeting with us twice and kind of working through the issues. And I think, I know it's very complicated. It was very, at this, at one point, it was challenging and we kind of worked through the issues. So, my objective was to make sure that it was open, transparent. And one of the thoughts that I wanted to touch back on was having some kind of opportunities for training. Okay, I'll just say it that way. And maybe reach out to the owners and ask them if they would like to have some continuing education or continuing training to maybe address some of those issues that they may come across. If it's happening to one motel, it may be happening to the other. And we may be able to, how would I say, shed some light on that issue and we can resolve it very quickly. But I think if at all possible, maybe with this ordinance, we could ask or put into some kind of program to be able to start asking them if they'd like to join the training and possibly, you know, bring them in and show them exactly, you know, this is what we've seen. This is what's going on. This is our recommendation. And help them navigate through the system. So, it's just a thought that it just came up here.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. And that's a great idea and we've talked about that. We've talked about, like, you know, we have our neighborhood watch captains. We do training with them. Our crime-free housing, we do training with. And I think, you know, that's that sort of, that ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure sort of philosophy. And we have definitely, we've already talked about that. I don't know if it needs to be in the ordinance. That's a council decision. But we're going to be doing training and offering it to everybody. And probably the sanction guideline too. You know, if we offer training and it's voluntary and your hotel's on that, in that 40% level, the hearing officer can say, "No, you need to go meet with the police department and attend this training." And so, we're definitely looking at that. I don't know what it's going to look like just yet. But we've already had a lot of discussions about that. Because that, again, that's work up front that helps alleviate a lot of different problems. And I know the Motel 6 was brought up earlier and I don't want to single out a specific motel. But we've worked with them and they have some great insight on how to, and things to share and how to clean up the business and make it a safe business.
That would be a great idea just to come up. I don't think it has to be in the ordinance, but I think maybe add it on for additional training and recommendation to the motel owners. And say, "Hey, look, this is what we have. This is what, you know, please come join us." And reach out to the motel owners. So, I think that would be a great idea for you guys.
Yes, sir. And that's in the works. That's...
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Just one last comment. I'd like to give kudos to Councilman Royball. As far as I know, you're the only one that actually took the time to go and meet with the motel owners. And you got introduction to me for one of them. Pete, because of you, this is a much better ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Labir, you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move to have a review of the lodging license every two years after the ordinance has been promulgated.
This is just an amendment...
Second?
To the motion. So, there's a motion and a second to the amendment for the review. Counselor Johnson?
Just for some clarification, did you feel like it was better to wait three years in order to? What is your take on this?
I think three only because, like we said, the first year is all, the only thing that will be required is if you're over the limit, you have to meet with us. And that goes back to your point about training. Each of those meetings will be a mini-training because we're going to talk through it. Then we would have two years of when sanctions would actually be put into place and we could see the effect. So, I think for the, because we have that buffer year built in to try and help get some voluntary movement, I think it'd be better to say three.
Would Councilman Labir be open to a change on that? Labru?
Possibly, but I also intentionally left it vague because a review, I think, could be pretty simple in terms, in the sense that it might be something as simple as letting us know the interactions that have taken place thus far with the licensees, et cetera.
Thumbs up.
Yeah, I'll probably say it. Yeah, that sounds, that sounds great, too. We're not opposed to that at all.
So, we have a motion and a second on the motion. Counselor Frankston, Mayor Protam Abel.
I just wanted to weigh in and say that I'm more in line with going with a three-year. And the reason being is the quality of the data. If you get the data too early, oftentimes you may be considering a course correction that wouldn't play itself out. that wouldn't play itself out. So I will not be supporting a two-year. I think it needs to be a three-year so we have better quality data and we don't mistakenly look at that early data and make a course correction that then could skew the entire program results.
Mayor Protem Abel?
I think that a review, a review in a year or six months or 18 months would be nice, just to know, an update what's going on, how things are. But I think if we're going to call for a view, we want something more formal, a real look back at the success and failures or the data connected with the program over a decent amount of time. And I think Sergeant Alish is the expert. So if he thinks 36 months is where we ought to go, I would agree with that, three years.
Counselor Labir, to your motion, do you want to speak to that?
If that's the way the council wants to move, I'm happy to move to three.
So.
Would you want to add something about a review after a year or a discussion after a year or so of how things are going? And then a real review after three?
So essentially, if I understand the motion though, it would be at three years because you're instituting upon promulgation of the ordinance, which you're still gonna, the ordinance will go into effect and it'll take you potentially a year to get everything rolling. And then his look back is two years after that. So essentially, you are at three years. Mr. Cox?
I was just going to suggest to accommodate both points of view, that it could be a formal review or thorough review at the three-year mark, but nothing would preclude interim, less formal updates from the police department. You can do that anyway, but if you wanted to be part of this provision and it is specifically allowed.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Do you want to proceed?
I want to vote.
Okay, please cast your votes.
Will you tell us exactly?
Certainly. To have a review of the lodging license every two years after ordinance has been promulgated.
I still have a question with that. Is that 36 months from tonight, three years from tonight? Promulgated is not.
It could be. Well, go ahead, Chief.
And Mayor, and Council, I, I'm okay with, with two years or three years. I think as Sergeant Alish said, we're not going to have a lot of data because I believe once this is, if it's passed, it's going to go into effect in 90 days. And then I, John, you can tell me how they have three months before they have to, each lodging facility has to have the license, so apply for the license. So it's going to be, yeah, we're six months really into the nuts and bolts of the program this year. So I, I don't know if we'll have a lot of data for you. What I can tell you is, you know, we review by, in our internal policies, we review everything. We review traffic accidents, we review internal affairs files, we review use of force, and we do yearly reports, reports on those. This will also be one of those things that we're going to review on a yearly basis. And I think if it's, if it's any consolation or to the council, we'll provide that documentation to you initially. So for the first, you'll be seeing that, so.
Thank you, Chief. Our motion maker is going to withdraw. Yeah, who had the second?
I'm going to withdraw them.
Second.
Okay, so we'll have the motion withdrawn in the second. Counselor Labir?
All right, restate a motion. I move to have an, oh, excuse me. Move to have a review of the lodging license every three years after the ordinance has been implemented.
Beginning. Cool?
Sure.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Is there any questions about that? This is the amendment only, please cast your votes. Eleven ayes, zero nays. So now ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2019-2 as amended on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? I'm just going to make a quick comment about supporting this. This is a long, long time coming. We heard 30 years. We also heard that, you know, not, not all these folks are bad operators, it's just a kind of a perfect storm. But what I think is important is for the last decade, we've been trying to get some of these motels to come on board. And in fact, I went up and down Colfax and left my business cards at the beginning of this process and had zero callbacks. And so now we're at the point where we have the opportunity, and this is what I heard tonight, I heard education, I heard partnership, I heard success, I heard encouragement. And that's the way this ordinance is going to help move the community forward. You also heard a number of 3,000 calls a year. And I don't think that 3,000 calls is spread out to all of our hotels and motels. I think it's a certain percentage where our highest calls are. So these are incredible resources that we as a community are utilizing. And then you add into the fray sex trafficking, drug dealing, prostitution. And certainly something that really hits home, and if you were here for our earlier discussion, you saw a slide of one of our police agents who almost had his scalp removed in an altercation. And that's what we don't want to have. We want to make sure that our businesses are successful, we want to make sure that our police are safe, our fire department is safe, we want to make sure that the folks who are staying and renting these motel rooms are safe as well. So I am thrilled that we are finally here at this point. I hope this gives you the tools that you so desperately need. And it's just not limited to Colfax. We actually have some problem areas throughout the city. So again, this is, this is a big night coming and I want to thank all of the folks in our police department and city attorney's office who've come a long way. And to those agents who've been injured and hurt, we said we're not going to let it happen again and hopefully we don't have to see this happen again. So with that, if there's not any other comments, please cast your votes. And that passes, 11 ayes, zero nays. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and we appreciate your support. And I think this is a great opportunity for our community and our, and we're looking forward to the partnership with our hotels. Thank you.
All right, so now with this, there's also fees. And fees are not based on just numbers that we come up with, but a fee has to be based upon a real number related to staff time associated with this. So I will ask for a motion on Resolution 2019-9.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-9.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Please cast your votes. Passes, 11 ayes, zero nays. Congratulations, that's a big deal. Does Council need to take a break? Are we ready to keep on rolling? All right, okay, all right. I was asked to check. Take it easy. Will the clerk please read item 16 and 17 into the record?
Item 16, ordinance O-2019-3, amending Title V of the Lakewood Municipal Code by adding a new chapter 5.55 regarding licensing of short-term rentals in the city of Lakewood, Colorado. Item 17, Resolution 2019-10, establishing short-term rental licensing fees for the city of Lakewood.
All right, so we're going to begin with a presentation by our clerk. And while she's coming up here, I just want to read a statement that was crafted by the Chair of our Housing Committee, Counselor Franks. And I certainly concur, as I think some other council members. But want to say thanks to everyone who's reached out on the topic of short-term rentals to share your feedback, ask questions and raise concerns. This is an important topic that will have a range of impacts to include housing supply into ban, affordability and attainability, neighborhood character and many other housing-related topics. As such, there will be a recommendation tonight to postpone further discussion on this topic until April 1st, which will give us time to convene a study session to expand the discussion and address the topic in a more comprehensive manner. Certainly that does not mean that it will or won't be adopted, but we'll continue to welcome your public comment tonight. And then if Council so chooses to take this to April 1st with what we've heard tonight to continue to work on this important issue. So with that, Ms. Millard, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Michelle Millard. I'm the deputy city clerk. And I'm going to give you a very brief PowerPoint presentation on short-term rentals. I'd like to start with a background. Short-term rentals are currently not a named use in the zoning code. And back when we did the 2016 zoning code amendment, council removed short-term rentals, they could have that at a separate discussion. Since then, our planning staff researched what other cities do and that information was presented at a study session back in May of 2018. Staff was also asked to place a survey online to gather more public input. So you're provided with talking points that you could take to your ward meetings to have those discussions with your constituents. And a survey was placed on lakewood.org where approximately 520 people participated in that survey. 360 stated that they had stayed at an Airbnb or a VRBO, where 183 responded that they had not. 233 stated they would consider renting their home on a short-term basis to supplement their income, where 283 stated they would not. The top concerns noted in the survey were about parking, traffic, not knowing neighbors and crime. On the plus side, others stated these rentals were usually the better-kept homes in the neighborhood, they liked the idea of meeting new people, their children were in a neighborhood setting, and it provided an ability to have a second income. You know, whether, whether people were in favor or opposed to short-term rentals, the majority agreed that regulations should be put into place. So the recommendations is to allow short-term rentals in the city of Lakewood and license and regulate short-term rentals per the proposed ordinance. So City Attorney Tim Cox and myself will be available to answer any questions you have. And thank you.
Fantastic. So it'll still be a public hearing, correct? So I'll open the public hearing. And there's been a request by Ms. Graves, representing the Lakewood Estates Homeowners' Association. We offer the courtesy of homeowners associations and neighborhood groups 10 minutes, so we would invite you to come on down. And then anybody else, I have a couple other folks that have indicated a wish to speak. Three minutes, two and a half, this little boxer should be green, 30 seconds left, it'll go yellow and it'll be red at three minutes. I'll politely ask you to wrap it up. And we'll go from there. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Lori Graves. I'm president of the Lakewood Estates Homeowners' Association, Homeowners' Association, filing one. Within our subdivision, there are five HOAs. One of them has not been active. So I'm only speaking for my 169 homes. We are zoned R16 and we are small lot. Where we're located, we're along Jewel between basically Depew and Pierce would be our boundaries. Most of the homes are under, the lots are like 9,000 square feet. Most of the issues that we have currently, just with our own residents, have to do with parking because there's not a lot of frontage on, on these small lots. We allow, as a homeowners association with CCNRs, we don't have an issue at all with long-term rentals in our development. What we have had are complaints with people using their properties as short-term rentals. We have two in our development and supposedly in our zoning, using the bed and breakfast recommendation that was done a couple of years ago, that said they could come and get a special use permit, they weren't supposed to be allowed in our zoning. When I approached the city about speaking to these people about their short-term rental, I was told they were allowed to have them. I'm not very happy about that because that's not my understanding. Which leads to some of the issues that I think we would have with short-term rentals, a lot of it having to do with code enforcement. Would take resources of the actual code enforcement personnel, who are few and far between, and police officers dealing with parking. And there were a lot of interesting things dealing with the short-term lodging at hotels. And that's what these properties will act as, is like hotel motel lodging, short-term If they're already over 300 now, I don't think there are resources to do enforcement in the city. The recommendation as it stands does not include enforcement, it includes just tracking. One of the vendors that they looked at, I think it would cost, I don't know in total if it was up to $25,000 to include enforcement. But the city, in my opinion, does not have the resources to do enforcement on that kind of volume. It's just not there. Other things that I did, I don't know if you saw my white paper, I spent quite a bit of time looking at it. I reviewed what's going on across the country for the last year. And most cities are struggling with the issue of short-term rentals. And what they're finding is they're having to tighten regulations. Aurora has already tightened theirs once. Denver is in the process of going to tighten theirs again. So my opinion is that as the ordinance is currently written, I think we should step back, study it, look at what everybody's doing and what, and what's come to light just in the last year around the country. And we're talking from Honolulu, San Francisco, Seattle, Dallas, Milwaukee, Atlanta, Boston, New York, Miami, just everywhere in between. And so everybody's standing back and taking a look at this, and I think we should do that too. Our concerns are the not having transients in, in the neighborhood, affecting the character of the neighborhood. We're not any different than anything you've read. We don't need more attention between property owners. So we want to, we want to have a regulation that suits both. And I think we can write a, a regulation as a city that still meets the goals. And it's not our, it's not our intent to stop people from renting their homes. We understand the income needs. But there's got to be a balance on those goals. And so I would recommend that we just take a step back. I don't know if at this point you want me to go through specific things that I would recommend. I have submitted them in writing previously.
You know, certainly we have those and those will be brought forth. Share them again, if you have the floor.
I'll just mention a few then. I think we need to look at some requirements about the neighborhoods, like notice to neighbors and a perimeter, number of days it can be rented, you know, what the, per year, or based on if it's owner property, they have to be in the property, you know, three months, six months, 10 months, this is in some city. And then to look at some zones which really can accommodate extra traffic. And I know there's a new zone coming up, R0. They're not going to have room for people to come in and park because those lots are even smaller. So it may be something you want to look at. The other thing that probably is most concerned is there's nothing in the regulation that says preapproval, you should deal with your HOA. It does deal with subleasing, you know, if you're using your apartment and talking to your landlord, but it doesn't address. your landlord, but it doesn't address showing the city that the HOA has said it's okay because there are CCNRs around town that don't allow a minor business like this because once you license it's a minor business, and it can fall under the CCNRs. Clarification on renewal and what's required for renewal, I think would be helpful on a license. And I'm going to take a, I had this in my own notes, but I'm going to take a page from the lodging that was just suggested about training. People get a license, they could attend a class. What does it mean to do short-term rental? How do you stay a good neighbor? What do you have to do to your property? How do you ensure the safety? Do you have enough insurance? Insurance limits look like they're going up to a million bucks nationwide. That's what they're recommending. So I think a training class would be a great idea. So when you get licensed, you get trained. That's a good way to build a partnership and help prevent complaints. If you start having, I mean, if you've got 300 now, I don't know what would happen once you started licensing, but city personnel isn't going to be there to handle the complaints. The other thing is, I think it would help setting some service standards for responding to complaints and how they're addressed upon license renewal. Same kind of thing as what you're doing with the hotels. There's no reason you can't do that. From that standpoint, be consistent. Having a handbook may be another way around it, instead of training. You know, you do the Property Codes Made Easy little brochure. There could be a pamphlet or a brochure for people who are going to do short-term rentals so that they can be educated. But I think education's the key to making this work in the neighborhoods, too. Finally, I think the sales tax needs to be worked out, the lodging tax, because Belmar is different than everybody else, so it would have to be across the board if it's going to be the 3%. So those are my comments, and I appreciate your hearing me.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out and getting us that information. Ms. McGee, do you wish to? If there's anybody else that would like to speak on this, please get lined up here with Ms. Millard, and we'll get you up after. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us give our comments, even though you're, I really appreciate that, that you're still allowing the comments to come forward. I think there has never been an ordinance that past council or future council would consider that has an impact on neighborhoods as much as this ordinance does. My husband and I are opposed to this, and you should have a handout that, okay. I showed this ordinance and passed this ordinance around my neighborhood. Nobody knows it's even up. I got phone calls. What does this ordinance mean? So I don't even want to address that part yet because this ordinance is, to me, kind of an opening up the Wild West of short-term rental behavior and is really a setup for loopholes, that we're going to open up the gate and all the horses are going to go out, and then we can never get the barn gate shut again. So basically, what I want to focus on especially is there's a huge difference between home sharing and complete whole rental of a dwelling unit. And so as Lori alluded to, even within the last two months, stricter regulations are coming up in New Orleans, cities all around, Frisco, Breckenridge, they have all combined have a 24/7 hotline. They are tightening regulations, and one of their council members just had to call the hotline on a short-term rental. So I want to ask you to imagine whether you live in a condo or a standalone, single-family dwelling, and I want you to just think about your neighbor has just rented out their home. They rented it to 10 people for a four-day holiday weekend. You are at home with family, visitors, kids, grandkids, et cetera. At 2:00 a.m. on Thursday night, 10 people show up in, let's say, eight vehicles. They are already looped because the reason they came to Colorado is, one of our number one destination reasons is legalized marijuana, and one of our other ones is craft beer. They set up, except, this was one of those where they told two friends, and they told two friends, and they told two friends, and you have 40 people that show up by 6:00 a.m., and you have 25 cars blocking neighbors' driveways, up in yards, so on and so forth. And they're all out in the backyard the whole time, and they are singing, and they are drinking, and they are smoking, and there's not one single thing you can do about it. You can call police. This is the weekend. Code enforcement doesn't work so well on the weekend for noise issues, but you can't get them out of the property, right? And so you have to lay awake all night listening to this. Oh.
You're getting close.
So in your handout is everything that I'm trying to point out to you and what I am actually trying to say to you, that this is personal in our neighborhoods. This is us 24/7. And I hope you will give great consideration, and I hope you will recruit the sergeant because he is very thorough, and that's the kind of analysis we need before we start looking at adopting an ordinance like this. And I wish you would put a moratorium to make sure there's no short-term rentals now. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar, good evening.
So whether you're for or against this, everybody's pretty much presuming this is going to pass, and Lakewood is going to approve some form of short-term rentals. I come to you not just as a Lakewood citizen, but as someone who has managed properties and rentals in four counties in Colorado of all types, long-term traditional and furnished, medium-term corporate executive, short-term vacation resort, et cetera. So I have direct experience in managing, writing leases, overseeing and consulting realtors and other owners on how to do this while maintaining or even improving their neighborhoods and not getting into trouble, as well as how to avoid problem tenants. That's easier said than done. I've also spoken to my neighborhoods and single-family neighborhoods and in multifamily residences. The multifamily residences are pretty much covered by HOAs because an HOA can forbid this. Boom, done. It makes it harder if you approve this because now the owner is saying, "Well, the city allows it, so you'll have to allow me." But it's easier if the HOA forbids it. And across the board, blanket approval of this in Lakewood, I submit, is inappropriate for this type of suburban, family-oriented suburb that is not a tourist or cultural destination. It is not a ski area. It is not a scenic resort. My experience with my neighbors operating illegal short-term rentals is that most of the people there are there because they want to avoid two things. The pot rules of the motels and hotels, and spending more money in hotels and motels, either in ski country or down here. They're not spending their money in Lakewood. They're partying, they're skiing, they're restaurating uphill, not down here. They're sleeping down here. As the two speakers have alluded to, yes, they arrive late at night, often with multiple vehicles. They often party. They often smoke pot outdoors, even if the policy at the house is no federally prohibited substances. So I ask you to take those things into consideration. I would ask you to exempt short-term rentals from single-family homes, the R1 zoning, and from R0 zoning. And anywhere else you want to do it where it's appropriate, that would make more sense. Other than that, I have specific recommendations, especially under F. You all know that for 12 years, I've been trying to do something about residential parking, and in the city neighborhoods that were built in the 90s that are all cul-de-sac oriented, there isn't enough parking for the people that live there now with five to seven vehicles per home. About half of the people that arrive with short-term rentals arrive with multiple vehicles. And a lot of the owners say, "You can't park in my driveway because you're blocking my car." So the statement under F has currently proposed a parking plan that provides at least one off-street parking space for a renter's use is woefully inadequate and ignorance of real experience. I submit and recommend it be modified to a parking plan that provides at least one off-street parking space for every guest vehicle. It's critical. And then there are other recommendations here. I guess I'm out of time, but I would be happy to answer any questions privately or in writing if you'd like. The other one that's woefully inadequate here is the insurance issue and the non-re requirement that they follow state law.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Shawna. I have nothing prepared. I wanted to speak, though, because I have direct experience with Airbnb. I own a five-bedroom home, and I'm a single mother of one child, a two-year-old. And I did research online. Unfortunately, I didn't call and speak with a warm body. I eventually ended up calling Michelle and spoke with her, I believe. But it was not plain to me to see that short-term rentals weren't allowed. I saw bed-and-breakfast, and I certainly don't run a bed-and-breakfast. I'm not cooking breakfast for anyone, but I want to tell you that my experience, I ran my Airbnb from October until I was asked to stop in January for an anonymous complaint that had, for no reason, just that I was doing it. And I strongly believe it was a personal thing with someone who knew I was doing this. The reason I believe that is I went to every one of my neighbors who knew I was doing Airbnb and let them know that there had been a complaint, and they were all shocked. They're like, "I don't understand. No one would even know what's happening in your home." My experience is different with my guests than I'm hearing these other people talk about. I have many people ask me for recommendations, where to go locally, where to eat. Many of my guests don't come with a vehicle. I have two rooms that I run out separately, and I have never had an experience with more than two vehicles. Usually, it's one, just one, between the two rooms, sometimes two. I, like I said, I have a two-year-old. I don't have parties happening there. A lot of people are trying to move to Colorado, trying to move to this area. I do have people that come to this, that are coming to ski. I just had some brothers from Norway that are ski instructors in Norway. I have not, I probably have had, I'm guessing, 40 guests over three months, and I have had amazing experiences with these people. More often than not, I walk into the room, and you can't even tell anyone's been there. They empty their garbage. They pick up their mess. They're quiet. They don't wake my baby. And I really, really hope that the city council does move to approve this. It allows me to stay home with my baby. My neighbors have not any complaints about this. And Airbnb, I don't know about VRBO, but Airbnb does offer $1 million of property damage coverage. And I hope the city council does move forward with approving this.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, I will close public comment, and certainly appreciate all the input and the opportunity that we heard from folks on Lakewood Speaks. There was a recommendation made that we postpone this and send it back to a study session which would be held on April 1st. If there's any problems with that, Counselor Skilling?
I agree. I agree with the sentiment to postpone it. I do not agree that we should have a date certain of April 1st. I think it should be postponed indefinitely. We do have a housing committee that's coming up. I'm certain that they will take that up at some point. I don't think between now and April 1st is going to do it. I would say we do it indefinitely, do it regular order, find a spot for it, but I know we have a lot of other pressing issues as well. I agree with postponing it. I just don't agree with April 1st, so I'll just leave it as indefinite.
Mayor Protem Abel?
There are a lot of questions remaining. We started off on this some months ago with a mountain of questions, and I'm not sure that we've reduced it much. We may have even added to the load. And every day, someone else asks me a different relevant question about these operations. I agree with Councilman Skilling that we don't, should not postpone to a date certain. I don't want to see it out there forever. While we're pondering this, we have folks like the lady that just spoke that are operating these things outside, well, with no regulation. And I think we need to act eventually to set regulations or to make it known that we're not going to allow them. So sooner the better.
I would just echo what Mayor Protem said. I certainly think we need to address this sooner than later. This has been a process that started some time ago and has been a priority to deal with, and there are folks on either side that are in limbo, either dealing with it while it's not legal, or, you know, the other opportunity that we heard. Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Well, as the person who brought forth the request to delay it, I can certainly respect the concern because there are a lot of issues. I think maybe a compromise would be that the April 1st is a study session, and if we come out of that, that we believe that the Housing Policy Committee, which is a committee that I may continue to chair as we move forward, if we say we come out of that with enough relevant, open questions, I think nothing precludes us from taking an additional step, but what we do is we continue the discussion in a robust fashion without unduly delaying it. So I think we can accomplish both. I think we can go with the date certain for a study session for which I'll have a bunch of relevant information that I'll bring forth because I had a lot of concerns about the ordinance, and then I think we can make a, at least try to come to a consensus that night. Does it look like we have something that we can move forward? Or the Housing Policy Committee could look at it if we believe that we are going to create some unintended consequences in the housing realm. So I'd like to maybe present that as an option.
Thank you for that clarification. And if I wasn't clear, that's what I had intended to say, not postpone for a second hearing, but postpone for a study session. Counselor Bida?
Thank you, Mayor. I would say this, if we are going to go ahead and continue this for further study, one of the issues I would like to have addressed very specifically is why we're going to even consider adopting rules that allow this in Lakewood in the first place. Okay? Because I understand it right now from reading everything I've read, technically, it's not allowed in Lakewood, but it's happening anyway. We're not enforcing it, but it is happening. So it's almost assumed that if we adopt this regulation, we've therefore now adopted Airbnbs in Lakewood without any real discussion as to why we need them, why are we doing it, who's behind it, where's the impetus coming from? I've never heard any of that. It's just been kind of put out there with the assumption, like somebody says, "Well, I assume it's going to be passed. It's just a matter of, are we going to regulate it?" I want to step back and go, "Wait a minute. Why are we passing it in the first place? Why are we allowing this in Lakewood? Is that the best thing for Lakewood? What impact has that had on other communities like Lakewood?" And I'm not talking Denver, I'm talking like Lakewood. What impact has that had on those communities, adverse or positive, either way? So any study session we have, I want to see us address that issue as well as the specifics of any suggested regulations.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Bida, you took the words out of my mouth. I happen to agree with you on this. No, don't be sorry. Frankly, I've had some concerns that the city's aware of this. We've known about them. All you have to do is look online and why we have kind of turned our head to begin with. We've kind of created a situation where people are going ahead, and frankly, after they're even aware, they're breaking the law, and we're not doing anything. I've got some issues with that. And I happen to agree with Councilman Skilling. This is not ready for prime time on April 1st. I think we need to, there's a lot more that needs to be vetted on this. This needs to be pushed out on our ward meetings, and we need to get a whole lot more input. Everything that I have received, with the exception of the nice lady that came to speak, has had real concerns about this. has had real concerns about this. There is a lot of material, a lot of data out there. Other cities are pulling back. We need to learn from that, and I don't want to see us have a date certain on this. Thank you.
Okay. And just let me remind council, we had a study session about this, and at that time, if you didn't want to proceed with this issue that should have been pronounced, right now, we've gone through a lot of work and it's actually been talked about in a lot of different forums. So I want to remind council that. And if you want to just do an up or down vote, then that is an option as well. But the reason why we're here is because this council directed staff to move forward. We're also here because, yes, you can see it on a map, but we can't verify the addresses. So we do enforce when we can prove it. At this point, we can't prove it. So that's kind of how we got here. Councilor Gutwin?
Thank you. I just want to speak in favor of moving this forward to a study session. I'm not sure how the date of April 1st was chosen, but I trust that there was a reason that it was chosen, that that's probably a realistic amount of time that we can get some of these questions answered. Is that correct? And I think that, you know, we have, we've started this process and then we, as a council, gave consensus to move it forward. We've been discussing it a lot in our ward meetings and getting some feedback. I don't think that what we have here is ready tonight, which is why I think that it's really good that we're going to delay it. I think that there's some really meaningful changes that we could make, especially around parking, that could address a lot of the concerns. And then at that time, of course, we will all, you know, have the opportunity to vote it up or down. So I think that it makes sense to continue this conversation. People are in limbo. I've heard from a number of people in the community that, you know, I just want to point this out. I think that a fair amount of people up here have probably purchased their home before the last 10 years, or five or 10 years. And since we bought our house, the price has doubled. And so, you know, the people that are moving to Lakewood now, it's expensive to live here. And I think we're hearing more and more from young families, from working families, from seniors living in their homes, that it's hard to make ends meet. And I think that if we can find a way that this can not negatively impact the surrounding community and the surrounding neighborhood, then I think that it, you know, it makes sense. Don't think we're there yet. I think we could potentially get there. And the last thing I want to say is that I have stayed in Airbnbs many times. I'm a mom with two young kids. I don't drink, I don't smoke. So I certainly think that that could happen, and we need to plan for that. But it's not going to be, you know, I just don't want to make it seem like everyone who stays in an Airbnb is this wild party animal. I just don't think that's the case. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for the ongoing input and discussion. And I think together, we can find a way to make this work.
Thank you. I have three more folks. Mr. Cox, did you want to weigh in real quick, or did you want to?
No, it's about the logistics of dates moving forward, so we can.
Okay, 10 for. Councilor Labir?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too have also stayed in many Airbnbs. And one thing I can tell you that's great about technology is not only do you rate the homeowner whenever you're renting one of these things on the app, but they also rate you. So if you're a bad tenant, you typically get pushed off of these things and then you're not able to be on them any longer. And I've also stayed in quite a few in suburbs. Usually, when I go out to California, I stay out there. Why? Because they're closer to the beach, just saying. So I've had some experience with it myself. But I will say, there's a lot in here. This is a pretty sweeping change, so there's a lot to grasp and a lot of things that I think will take quite a bit of study to understand. And I do remember the study session fairly well that we had a year ago, I believe, in May, I think it was. But I also think, I just don't think a study session personally for me will actually do it, because I think there's a lot of things to wrap my head around, whether it's what type of zoning is appropriate, or et cetera. So I would maybe add, if this is a way to end up in a committee or something like that where people can have a little bit, you know, more depth to it, which I think Councilman Skilling alluded to a little bit with the housing one, I'd be happy to take a look at that. I'm just throwing that out there, because I don't know if I could support it if we had one more meeting on it and then a vote. So FYI, thanks.
Councilor Royball?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Skilling brought up a great point, and I think where it needs to be is at the housing study, or the housing committee. And I think we can have a great, robust discussion there. I think we can iron out a lot of the things that need to be ironed out, everything, including parking and zoning and other things like that. But I think that's the appropriate place for it to be. So I would really, in my thought, I think I would really like to see it in the housing committee. So that's what I have.
Councilor Vincent?
And that's fine if it ends up in the housing committee, but I've got to support what Councilwoman Franks said. We need more information to do that, because it's easy to put something in a committee, try to pull something together, and then I wouldn't be confident that everybody wouldn't take the time then to smash apart everything that we had without giving any input first. So at least if you had a study session, that would give us something to wrap our arms around with and maybe try to work with.
Mayor Protem Abel?
There seemed to have been an implication that because we sent this out of study session toward tonight's hearing, that we somehow had said, "Yeah, we're going to do this and bring us some rules." I don't believe that was the conversation. Certainly, we can say no at the end of second reading, but there are just so many questions here. And tonight, there are a lot of comments about the pros and cons of the ordinance in general as opposed to whether we're going to put it off for the moment. And I do want to mention that no matter how well you and your daughters behave, we heard in Ward One meeting about this Airbnb over in Daniel's Gardens where there are wild parties in the hot tub with the view of the mountains and people getting, drinking way too heavily. And that's what we're concerned about. Don't call me, I don't have their phone numbers. So if you're curious, I can't help you. But this is about, tonight is about the merits of where we go from here, not whether it's going up or down, but what further explanation and information we need.
Councilor Bida and then Councilor Franks?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also want to kind of address a point you made, Mayor. I have to take issue with, and that is this, you know, by agreeing to keep an open mind on these kind of subjects early on, looking at the study session, allowing staff to go forward with what they would recommend as an ordinance, I don't think that it should in any way be looked at as somehow a message that we're going to go ahead and vote for this, that we're sort of bound by that at that point, by agreeing to allow it to go forward so that we can get a better picture, so that we can keep an open mind and understand all the implications. And if that is going to be the case in the future, and if that's going to be the case by tonight, us agreeing to allow this to go for further study, then I would say, let's call the question now. That would be my, let's call it now. Otherwise, there has to be a clear understanding that by allowing this to go forward for further review, further study, that it does not in any way bind any of us to vote for yes or no on any of it. I think that has to be made clear. So that's all I have.
Councilor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Well, I wanted to speak to a couple things. I still am for the original proposal, and the reason being is the study session continues the conversation. Going to the housing committee, I appreciate that, but keep in mind, we don't yet have a housing committee because the ordinance, I have not signed off on it moving forward because I have issues with that. In case you all don't realize, I'm very detail-oriented, so it's a person who I'm in the weeds. So I think that is the perfect compromise, study session. Let me finish the housing ordinance so we can get that in front of you, so you can actually authorize us to be a commission, because we are not authorized. So there is no Housing Policy Commission at this point. And I agree with Councilor Bida, but I think the mayor also said at the beginning, this doesn't mean there's any bias towards this. We all at any time can get input from our communities. I am a representative of Ward Four. Even if I thought something was the best thing and I would personally vote for that, my job is to go out and talk to everyone in the community that I can get in touch with and find out what the community wants. I represent you. I don't bring my own ideology or my own wishes. So I think we can maybe cut quickly to the chase. Can I start getting some nods? That, all right, I'm trying to pull this together, so we are going to hopefully get consensus for a study session at the end of that. If we want to send it to the Housing Policy Commission, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you. Well said. Mr. Cox?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-ups on the scheduling of this. This was a most unusual situation, having a study session all those months ago. And when it came to getting this on an agenda, we were scrambling through various people's notes to remember and remind ourselves what was happening back last May. But we certainly didn't take it as a direction to adopt an ordinance. It was prepare an ordinance for discussion, and council would have the opportunity at this time or later to vote however you wanted to on it. In terms of going forward, we generally talk about a date certain when we're at this stage because you need that in order to keep this placeholder in the process. If you wanted to simply continue the second reading, that would have to be to a date certain, or else you lose the benefit of having gotten to that point in the process. So it seems that that's what I'm hearing from various council members is, it's okay not to have the date certain for a further public hearing, because we're not ready for that. That being the case, it really doesn't matter whether you continue it to date certain for study session, because that's not part of the first reading, second reading, adoption process. So you can essentially continue it indefinitely and select a date for a study session in the interim, or however you want to do that. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear that if you go through that process of a study session, you won't be able to pick it up at second reading and continue this process. We'll be taking a step backwards, which it sounds like that's what's desired and what's necessary.
So would you need a motion to postpone indefinitely and then a secondary for, or just a recension back to study session?
I think a motion to continue it indefinitely would be appropriate. I'm not sure you need to.
It's a made-up word. That's what we do.
The study session part of it is kind of a scheduling logistical thing. You decide how far out you need it, whether it's April 1st or something beyond that. But I'm not sure that even needs to be part of any motion. We can just schedule that based on availability and.
So the motion would be to postpone indefinitely on items 14 and, no, 16 and 17 separately?
Mayor, I move to continue indefinitely. The consideration of ordinance O-2019-3 and Resolution 2019-10, or do I have to do them separately?
I think separate would be.
Okay. The farmer. I move to continue indefinitely the consideration of ordinance O-2019-3.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Please cast your votes. 11 ayes, zero nays. Move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to continue indefinitely a consideration of Resolution 2019-10.
Second.
Motion a second. Please cast your votes. 11 ayes, zero nays. So that will take those off the plate, and then is there consensus to go to April 1st for a study session, which will also allow for public input as well? Okay. So we'll go to April 1st.
Can we get more clear consensus?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Just consensus.
Okay.
Well, April 1st, please. Thank you. We don't have many of these, so just want to make sure my notes are correct. The next item is a rezoning hearing. There's a written sheet titled rezoning hearing procedures at city council meetings on green paper available on the table by the entrance to city council chambers. Is that still accurate? This is an old script.
I'm not sure. It might not.
Okay, well. Or there's a sign-up roster at the back, and I actually have some folks who've signed up. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with the steps we follow in conducting the hearing, you are welcome to get a copy of this information at any time, which I apologize, we probably don't have. So I'm going to skip this script from 1969, and I'm going to ask the clerk to read item 18 into the record, please.
Item 18, ordinance O-2019-4 to rezone land located at 1950, 1960, and 1970, South Newland Street, Lakewood, Colorado, 80227, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado.
Thank you. So I'll now call down Mr. Cunningham of PCS Group. He's going to begin with the applicant's presentation, and then after that will be Ms. Karamila, principal planner, and she will share the staff presentation. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. First, let me apologize for being the person coughing that's been disrupting things this evening. Hopefully, I can get through this without having to.
There's a lot of sick people in here. Physically.
Thank you for being here tonight. This is a rezoning request, as mentioned. It's for a small infill parcel, about 8.3 acres. As mentioned, the address is off Newland Street. It's basically along West Jewel, just to the east of the Green Gables redevelopment. So this slide shows you the existing condition on the left-hand side. It's a property controlled or owned by the Heitlers, and the portion that we're bringing before you tonight is highlighted on the right side of the slide. As you can see, it's in the center of the property. And I'll get into the details about that rezoning request, but basically, we're asking to rezone the portion that's highlighted there from R1, or sorry, R143 to R2 to accommodate detached patio ranch homes on that center portion of the Heitler property. I'll give you a little bit of context on the site and the area, and then kind of some specifics on the process we've been through over time. So this is obviously an older photo. Just wanted to show some context, that that was actually the original holdings of the Heitler family that stretched from Green Gables Country Club on the west-hand side all the way over to Sheridan in the southeast corner. And obviously, it's developed into predominantly residential over many decades. This slide shows the more recent holdings of the Heitler family. You can see two parcels on either side of Ward Lake. The one to the southeast has been sold, so the portion on the north side of the lake adjacent to what's highlighted of Green Gables shows the remainder of the Heitler family holdings in this portion of the city. This slide shows the site, again, highlighted in red in the context of the zoning of the greater neighborhood. The areas shown in white on here are lower-density parcels zoned between 1 and 2 DU per acre, which, as you can see, are fairly limited in the greater neighborhood. The yellow, I call it the yellow color, the light orange that's predominant on this ma- predominant on this map, is representative of densities between 2 and 4 DU per acre. Within our proposed rezoning, we're proposing 28 units on this 8.3 acres, which equates to 3.4 DU per acre, and in keeping with a lot of that area within the neighborhood, as well as the ground to the west of us in Green Gables. This slide just zooms in on the area a little more closely, so you can see. With our request, we're proposing, because we believe that this provides a transition from our neighboring properties in the R143 zoning to the east, as you move west to the new redevelopment in Green Gables. The, as you can see on the map, there's much higher densities allowed in Green Gables per the zoning of up to 5 and 15 DU per acre. But what's planned there actually falls, one of the parcels at 3.2 DU per acre, the other at 3.8. So we believe our 3.4 request is in keeping with those adjacent properties. In terms of the rezoning criteria that the city looks at, and our relationship to it, we believe that we'll be providing a range of housing types and price points. When I say that, I mean within the greater area. Obviously, with 28 units, there's not that much diversity within those. But we're proposing to bring age-targeted residential product to this area. So in that sense, diversifying the product within the area. We're protecting the natural environment by maintaining Schwaeder Pond, Schwaeder Lake on the property. We're promoting orderly development through the integration of single-family detached within an area of single-family detached homes. And we're also providing good pedestrian and vehicular connectivity to, not to the east, because there's a gated community directly east of us, but to the west with the new Green Gables development. In terms of being compatible with existing land uses, as I mentioned, we are proposing single-family detached homes, and that's what's surrounding our property. The proposed R2 zoning provides a compatible transition between adjacent properties in both directions. We're proposing quality infill development that provides housing options for the city's aging population, and for those that may be looking to downsize from larger homes with greater maintenance responsibilities. Also, in terms of implementation of the comprehensive plan, the demographics for Lakewood do show an aging and growing population in that area. So providing product for those people to downsize while remaining within this portion of the city. We're also keeping a portion of the property zoned as R143 on the Heitler ground to be consistent with some of the neighboring properties on that portion of Ward Lake, and to still allow for the keeping of horses as the comp plan desires. And then, obviously, we believe there's been a material change in the neighborhood with the Green Gables redevelopment to the west. So this is just a conceptual plan for reference. We thought it was important, because I'm going to go through some steps, show you what we've been through. We've been working on this project for quite some time. So while it's not technically part of the rezone, it sort of serves as the basis for our request. Lennar would be looking to build, as I mentioned, 28 patio ranch homes. We'll still need to obviously come back before the city with a subsequent plating to actually create those 28 lots, because that's not part of the request tonight. So we show this to you just to give you the context of the basis of the request. The areas shown in gray to the south and north of this property are to be retained by the owner, and they will remain in that R143 zoning. So if we go back, this was, actually, I think our original plan was 41 or 42 units, but this one with 38 was the first plan that came before the city. And as you can see, there was an initial city meeting on January 30th of 2015. So we've been working on this with your staff and with neighbors for a little while now. So this one was brought before the city, had 38 units on it. And as you can see, there was a loop road configuration. And we were providing a buffer to our closest neighbor to the east. And then we had four lots proposed on the eastern side of our road, adjacent to our other neighbors. It also shows an assisted living facility up along Jewell that that was by someone else, and it's no longer part of this application. We, in going through that first process, learned that some of our neighbors to the east weren't happy with the plan. And so we made some revisions to it. We included only three lots to the east side of our loop road instead of four. And we had a buffer that was 20 or 25 feet wide behind those three lots, as well as the larger buffer that you can see shown there. I think it was about 3/4 of an acre. This plan actually went before planning commission in January of 2017, was recommended for approval. But we learned at that point, still from talking to some of the neighbors, that they still weren't in favor of it. So we actually pulled the application before bringing it before council and continued to work with the neighbors. In working with the neighbors, sort of the, one of the things we learned was that the existing barn on the property was viewed very favorably. People wanted to keep it for the character that it brought in the neighborhood, and they wanted the buffer increased. And so we took that to heart. We looked at revising the plan. We brought it down from 38 to 32 units, created a lot for the existing barn that was also part of the buffer, that obviously wrapped the entire eastern side of the property. Excuse me. So this was one that we went to the neighbors and we were ready to kind of forge forward with. And we kind of heard, "That's a lot better, but..." And so we kept working with them, and we arrived at the plan now, that this is shining back to the one you saw earlier, that's before you guys. Again, not really part of the rezoning, but it's the basis for everything that's happened and for our request. So it's been reduced to 28 units. You can see the existing barn lot and buffer on that side. It's a minimum of 75 feet wide, and that's well over an acre, so that it could, that portion of the ground could actually remain in R143. It's not part of the rezoning request. And then you can also see that part of what drove us to this plan was the four lots that are closest to that buffer being larger to even, so they do even transition within this property. So there's a kind of a close-up of that area, and something we talked about with them, that you can see the buffer, how the existing barn sits and the lot it creates. And then there is a covenant that comes with this, that I'll talk about in just a second, that a declaration and covenant that specifies that within that area that's defined as parcel B, that there would only be four lots. And as configured, that allows us to have two half-acre lots closest to the eastern side of our property and transition down So as I mentioned before, we believe that our request provides a suitable transition between the densities in the area within the residential development that's there. We're requesting R2 zoning as a part opposed to R16 to accommodate the lot sizes for the patio homes. We found that when you do these kind of age-targeted patio homes, that smaller lot sizes with much lower maintenance is what people desire. Just to be clear, with R2 zoning, obviously, in your code, it allows duplexes. That's off the table as part of the declaration and covenant that was executed between the applicant and the surrounding landowners. Duplexes would not be built on the property. So the request for R2 is basically based on the lot sizes to bring in the smaller patio homes. So this slide, again, shows the close-up of the plan and just a couple product types. As mentioned, the commitment has been to do patio ranch homes, so they'll be single-story, although they could be walkouts if the grade condition allows on the back. But they won't be two-story homes in that condition. And as being age-targeted, the project's not age-restricted, so they won't be deed-restricted, but being age-targeted, CalAtlantic and Lennar, in their experience where they've done this, they typically get basically the same results. When they market something as age-targeted, they tend to find that 80% of the people that buy there kind of fall into that active adult category. And the 20% don't, which is sort of how the deed restriction would fall. So without going to that sense, it's still age-targeted. And with that, you get very low traffic impacts that come from it, because people have more flexible schedules, so they can drive when they want during the day and reduce peak hour impacts. This slide just shows some of the architectural quality and what could be expected in these kind of open living concept ranches. When we started this project, it was with CalAtlantic Homes, who received the Builder of the Year Award in 2016. As you probably, most of you probably know, they've been since acquired by Lennar, who actually won Builder of the Year in 2018. So I think that commitment to quality and to energy efficiency and modern construction techniques. And they have affiliations with Amazon and Ring doorbells and all kinds of things to make sure that their houses keep up with the demands of modern living. Just a couple more slides that kind of show some of the designs of the patio homes and how they come together. In terms of being age-targeted, we've learned that active adult people, obviously in Colorado, are active anyway. One of the things we're excited about is the ability of this, while it's a smaller infill one, you can see here how it can tie into, I think it's about two and a half miles worth of trails throughout Green Gables and Sanderson Gulch to kind of really promote that active lifestyle. In terms of vehicle connectivity, this was worked on, we actually worked on the planning of Green Gables Reserve. So we've been working with the city for quite a while on your city staff, requiring the connection of Newland Street and foreseeing the future and allowing this property to connect through Green Gables. So there are connections out to Wadsworth, so it wouldn't be forcing all the traffic onto Jewell. And as mentioned, it's only 28 units. And with them being age-targeted, the peak hour traffic coming from it is really minimal and negligent, and shouldn't have any effect on that anyway. In terms of the sign covenant, you can see it here, the commitment that the applicant made so that the owners knew what they were getting is for single-family detached homes. There'll only be 28 of them. They're single-story ranch homes. The four lots that were defined on that parcel B, with the size that's there as they're laid out, those are half-acre lots, the two to the east, and then transitional ones between that as we get down to the remainder of the patio lots. It creates a barn lot that has a minimum 75-foot buffer associated with it, adjacent to the existing residence to the east. And then there's also the provision for either an eight-foot concrete wall or landscape, or some combination thereof, that the applicant will work with the specific landowners adjacent to the east on what they want to see as part of that buffer. So in summary, we've worked on this extensively for, I guess, four years now, which is a lot for a 28-unit project, I must say. We believe we're providing a transitional density on a parcel. We're providing a product that we think, from the demographic, will be sought after in this part of the city, allowing people who are aging in Lakewood and maybe want to downsize to a smaller ranch home, the ability to do so and to stay so, and stay within the city. And the applicants provided a signed declarant and covenant to make sure that our neighbors are comfortable that they're going to do what they said they were going to do all the way through this process. So with that, myself and Kent Peterson with Lennar Homes are here to answer any questions if you have them.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to move into the staff presentation. Appreciate that. Ms. Mueller, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. Hello, my name is Karen Mueller. I'm with the Planning Development Assistance Division. And I'm here to present the Lennar rezoning case, case RZ18001. Property address 1950, 1960, and 1970, South Newland Street. This property is located east of South Newland Street, south of West Jewell Avenue, and south of Schwaeder Lake. The case address for this is 6,000 West Jewell Avenue. That was the previous tracking case number, so we wanted to keep that so people would know when they saw that, that this may be potentially the same property. The planning commission on December 5th of 2018 did approve, make a recommendation for approval of this to council at the hearing on that evening. This proposed rezoning is from one-acre residential, R143, to two-family and small-lot residential, the R2 zone district. The applicant has also, as stated, proposed deed restrictions on this property. We do have a copy of that deed restriction that is already signed and notarized, and it is held with staff. So if there is approval, that will be recorded along with the ordinance. At the same time, the applicant with that is proposing only single-family homes. Those would be ranch. There's a limit on that height as well. They would provide a lot for the barn to exist on the property. There would be a 75-foot wide buffer as well along the east side between the eastern neighborhood and this development. As well, they propose a wall, and they'll leave that up, along with landscaping up to those neighbors that are along the east side, working with them as they move forward if this is approved. They're also only going to be allowed four lots on that easternmost piece. The two closest have to be at least a minimum of a half-acre in size, and then the other two would transition back to the R2 portion closest to South Newland Street. Once again, just to point out, the buffer and the barn lot are going to remain zoned R143. So that zoning would not change. It's only the other portion. The property proposed for that rezoning is really 5.7 acres of the overall acreage of what's being shown with the tract area of 8.3. The zoning process is our most public process. It begins with a pre-planning application. That happened quite a while ago. The neighborhood meeting is then held prior to making any kind of formal application on a rezoning request. That allows the applicant to reach out to the citizenry and HOAs in the area and share what they would like to do proceeding forward, and garnish their feedback in order to make a determination if they would like to enter into the rezoning process. They then may submit a formal application, which they have. Once again, on December 5th, they went to planning commission. That body maker made a recommendation for approval to council, and we're here this evening for that final public hearing. If it is approved this evening, then after the referendum period, the required 45-day referendum period, they can come back in with a major subdivision and a site plan, and then building permits. It's important to note that any subdivision that's 10 lots or more, that's single-family or duplex development, is considered a major versus a minor subdivision, and that will go back to planning commission at a hearing for them to just check, make sure that all of the requirements are being met. So here's Ariel, once again, next to the Green Gables Development, which is actually an incorporated Jefferson County, south of West Jewell Avenue. The little area here in yellow is the site that we're looking at for the rezoning component. Once again, the barn lot, as well as the 75-foot buffer tract going out to West Jewell Avenue is indicated in red. So just a blow-up of that. You can see South Newland Street, and then the gated community directly to the east is in the 6,200 West Jewell HOA. So a little bit of site context. This is standing on South Newland Street in the two top photos. This is looking westbound across the drainage channel that is bringing in drainage from Sanderson Gulch and various drainage ways across the property. They do end up in Schwaeder Lake, and then those continue across Jewell and to the east. In the lower picture, those are some of the Green Gables homes. These are looking actually westbound from South Newland Street. On the top portion, you can see Schwaeder Lake on the right, and you can see the barn, if you look really carefully through the trees on the property, on the left-hand photo. On the lower photo, you can see that some of those connected sidewalks are already in place along the east side of South Newland Street. So that'll provide some of that connectivity, and then be required to also continue to the east into this proposal. So a little site context. They've worked a lot with the neighbors. I've been out on some of the neighboring properties. And this is a photo looking to the south toward the actual barn lot. And you can see the barn, and this is a chain-link fence of one of the neighboring properties to the east. This is looking south from that property, and this is the Holt House property. You can see kind of the ring road that exists today. The buffer will kind of follow along that. This is just another photo. You can see that there is some greenery and some evergreens. Those are obviously on the neighboring property. Those will remain, but there'll be an opportunity to work with them. Just some more photos of that. The barn's actually beyond those trees. And then this is the interior Hawthorne Lane Road, the private road within the community. You can see- You can see the roofing of the barn in the distance. Previously, that was not kept as part of the original application, as you heard from the applicant. There is a lot of interest to keep it. It's a nice structure, and it brings some history to the area, so they're looking to keep that now with this application. And this is just kind of an idea of what is, exists actually between Lakewood Estates and the 6,200 neighborhood, so this is kind of an idea of what a six-foot fence with some landscape screening when you have two residential developments that are actually fairly well-established. You can see some rooftops, but there's really some good separation there and greenery. So the zoning on the property, as stated, is one-acre residential, R143. It's the same as the property to the east, the property is to the south, all the way up to Jewel. The boundary really breaks there at South Newland Street, and you have unincorporated Jefferson County. You heard from the applicant that the densities that are proposed within the R2 are very consistent with what is proposed and currently happening to the west of South Newland Street in that Green Gables Development. If you go to the north, we get into PD zoning, which is very specific to some of those single-family residential districts such as White Finch Farm Neighborhood, and that we do have some mixed-use employment, but there's a lot of R1 districts within the area. And on the south side, it is predominantly residential. The intent of the R2 zone district is to provide for small-lot, single-family, and duplex residential development. Once again, the covenant that we hold in place, if this does get approved, would remove the ability to do duplex from the land uses allowed. So here's a use comparison. Some of the biggest things you'll notice is, a lot of it is very similar. There's a few differences, but the big one is the highlighted one, where duplex would be allowed, it would be removed by that deed restriction. These are some of the dimensional standards. You'll know, obviously, there's a very large difference between lot size and lot width. These are, you know, very different residential zone districts, but a lot of the setbacks are very similar. And so what they'd be looking at is that 5,000-square-foot single-family lot, because once again, you would not be allowed to do paired or duplex units. And the tract area B, you would be required only, or allowed only, four lots, two of which must be half-acre. So this is the conceptual land use plan. It's a required document that we get for any rezoning. It's meant just to provide enough information to really understand some of the constraints and opportunities of the area surrounding a proposed rezoning as well as the property itself. So once again, real quick, the area shown in blue, that's the area where they would only be allowed four lots, two of which would have to be the half-acre. The light green area up to Jewel, that's the 75-foot buffer. The dark green is where the barn sits, and that would be the R143 barn lot. And then there would be probably two access points coming in off South Newland Street, which would meet spacing requirements. And really, what we're looking at rezoning is that Lot 4 piece to R2. And the transition that's provided from the buffer as well across from the larger lots provides that transition between the R143 over into the Green Gables Development. So public improvements in assessment is a large part of what we'd be looking at if approved through the plating process, as well as the site planning process. We'll be looking again at pedestrian connectivity, street connections, spacing requirements, all the ordinance requirements for engineering and transportation engineering. Detention and water quality will need to be provided on this site as well. They'll have to process that major site plan and plat. The neighborhood meeting was held on January 30th. A lot of the same neighbors who had been working with them throughout the years did attend that. A lot of those concerns, again, what's the density of units? What does this layout look like? How has this changed? The understanding that it was 10 less units than what they were looking at last time was received fairly well. Still always a concern with traffic generation. Do all the trips go to Jewel? We know the connectivity is there, and it can take them to Wadsworth as well. The question on age restriction, is that part of the deed? It is not proposed as part of the deed. It's just their target market. And then what's the overall process moving forward? Public notification was met. You have to publish in a mailer that was your hub of a certain percentage of the area. Notification was mailed to all owners of property and tenants within 500 feet, as well as all registered HOAs within half a mile. As well, the site was posted at several locations to meet the zoning ordinance requirement. We did not receive any public correspondence in writing since the posting of this. There are outside agency reviews. Seven outside agencies were sent, outside referrals. We didn't receive no objections. This includes the Jefferson County School District, Water and Sanitation District, Excel Energy, and Jefferson County. There's three rezoning review criteria. Conformance with the intent of the zoning ordinance is number one. The second is compatibility with surrounding land uses and land uses envisioned in the comprehensive plan. And the third is consistency with the comprehensive plan. The largest intent of the zoning ordinance is obviously to promote health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Lakewood, providing connectivity, making sure that any drainage issues, situations, anything that can affect adjacent properties as well as the property that we're looking at. Orderly development through a public process is also very important. This is the most public process, and staff feels that there was a lot of communication on this one, so that was good as far as providing that continued communication. It also provides for an opportunity for a range of housing types to meet our current and future needs, whether those be an aging population or just residents in general. Compatibility is a large one, so compatibility with the R2 zone district. There has been a material change in the area with the Green Gables Development, whether you like it or don't like the development. It did bring residential to the area. It was a large change from what used to be a golf course that was also, you know, pretty much in the same zoning classification in Jefferson County, complementary to an R143. So that increasement, increasing density as well as the density that does run along the west side of the street, the R2 is very compatible with that. We also feel that with negotiating through 75-foot-wide buffer as well as those transitional lots, provides that good transition that wasn't there originally from those R143 lots to the east. Lakewood 2025 moving forward is our comprehensive plan. It's pretty much our vision, our guiding principles, and our goals and action steps. The demographics of Lakewood, they do illustrate an aging and a growing population, pretty much, much like the Denver metropolitan area. This results in the need for additional housing accommodations, of which this development could provide. Consistency with the comprehensive plan in the R2. The proposed zoning is consistent with the South Lakewood neighborhood. It'll be in character with the surrounding single-family land uses as well and compatible. It's a large portion of the property to the south of this will remain R143. One of the concerns of the comprehensive plan is losing properties that may have the ability to keep large animals. With this proposal, a lot of that R143 piece will still be held in part or a large part by the Heitler family, Heitler Land Control. The rezoning will allow for a mix of housing types. As the applicant said, with 28 homes, it's not that great a mix, but it does add into the character and the mix of what's already existing within that south side of West Jewel Avenue. It can also accommodate for low maintenance and meet the housing needs of the city. Staff does find, as you will see in the findings of fact and order, that this rezoning application is in conformance with the intent of the zoning ordinance. It's compatible with surrounding land uses and land uses envisioned in the comprehensive plan, and it's also consistent with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, Planning Commission recommends that the city council approve rezoning case That concludes staff's presentation and be available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously done. All right, I'm going to now open the public hearing on ordinance 2019-4. I have Mr. and Mrs. Thune. It looks like, Mr. Thune, you wish to speak?
Von Thune.
Von Thune, my apologies. Come on down.
(inaudible)
Thanks for coming out.
One question, but I'll put a little levity first. I live just up the hill from this, along, I guess it's along South Newland. It used to be called Country Club Road in Green Gables Reserve. We would have moved to this place in a heartbeat if it had been built before the others, because it is for aging population and single-family. Looks great along the lake. I've run there every morning and run along Sanderson Gulch, and this morning, a coyote walked right across that, that Schwaeder Lake. Anyway, my question is to the staff, the part that wasn't shown in the pictures is, and the, really, the only reason I would say not to have it, is that what's there now is a buffer, the width of the, the width of the lake or a little bit more, that goes all the way up the hill. And in the front there, which was not mentioned, is about, oh, 70 or 60 pine trees, look real beautiful. So there's a whole hillside that is a buffer. Now, the question is, what happens to the part to the north in front of the, in front of the lake?
Great.
Is that going to be still R143 or?
So we'll tackle that after public comment. So thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Nobody else has signed up to speak. If you wish to, all right, I will close public comment, and now we'll see if we can address that question. Ms. Mueller?
Thank you, Mayor. The question is, what is the zoning on the property that is located north of Schwaeder Lake and to the southwest Jewel Avenue? That zoning is one-acre residential, R143, and will remain that. It's not part of this application.
So I'm going to go to council questions or comments. I'll start with our Ward Three representatives, since this is in your neck of the woods. I was just going to start with the Ward Three folks, since this is your neighborhood. Do you want to talk?
Our ward meeting on Saturday, we had 200 people show up to show their concerns for White Finch Farm. What that tells us is that this is a very connected community, and they're very, more than willing and able to come out and express their concerns and objections if they have them. And so seeing none here, I think that tells us a lot. I also feel that the owner and developer have worked very hard to work with the surrounding neighbors in the community to make this something that's compatible with them, and so I'm going to be voting for it, and I would urge my colleagues to do the same.
Council rebel, anything?
Actually, Councilor Bida already said it all, so I ditto.
Mayor Protem Abel?
Just a couple of years ago, this was a very contentious, not this project, but one on part of the same ground, was very contentious. And it wasn't quite resolved in a piece, a way that everyone liked, but now everyone's put their heads together. The developer's been very responsive, staff's been very responsive from what I hear. And this is the way that sausage should be made. It's a great job, folks, and I'll be supporting this as well.
Councilman Klein?
Ditto to everything that everyone just said. And if, if all projects went like this, my job would be so much easier. So thank you for all the work that you did. And I just, yeah, really appreciate you working with the community and the community working, all of you working together to make this happen. And I'm excited that we're going to have some patio homes in Lakewood. I know that there's a lot of people that would like to see this kind of option, so thank you.
Yep, I will echo everything that's been said. It was actually interesting to see that slide of the original Heitler property that took in a lot of that residential that is now there today. But I know it's been a long road, but I appreciate your willingness to continue to work. It's always easier for us when we can have the neighborhood come on board. And tonight, I was talking on my way in to somebody from the neighborhood who really thinks highly of Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Pedersen, so that you were even sitting around people's dinner tables. So that says a lot. I appreciate that, and we'll certainly be in full support. Before I entertain a motion, Mr. Cox, do, we need to, we just have a general motion? Do we need to accept the findings of fact by Planning Commission?
The motion should have that finding in there.
Well, we will improvise. We'll make it up. Mayor Protem will figure it out. He's a wordsmith.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-219-5, including the finding of facts from the Planning Commission on second and final reading.
Second it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you both.
A motion in two seconds. Any more discussion? All right, please cast. Oh, one second, please.
2019-5? I think he means four.
I'm sorry.
2019-4, thank you very much.
Council rebel, you want to second that?
I'll second it.
All right, so now we have a motion and a bona fide second. Yes, please. Please cast your votes. And that passes 11 high, 00s. Congratulations. Okay. The clerk, please read. Where are we at? Item 19 into the record.
Item 19, ordinance O-2019-5, amending chapter 2.52 of the Lakewood Municipal Code pertaining to initiative and referendum procedures.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cox, did you want to weigh in at all?
Well, just by way of a little bit of background, the staff report addresses the history of this proposal. Our role was simply to make some revisions to the draft ordinance that was prepared by Councilors Bida and Abel. We just modified the format a little bit to make it a little, a little bit shorter. But this would, as, as council knows, remove the three sections of the initiative and referendum chapter in our code to remove the stay provisions that have been discussed in the pending initiative case, but the, a third section would be removed as well that's applicable only to referendum matters. So it would eliminate the stay provision for both kinds of questions.
Thank you. My apologies. Ms. Mueller, did you read that into the record?
She did, yep.
Okay. All right, let's open the public hearing. Again, three minutes, two and a half green, 30 seconds yellow and red at three minutes. Ms. King, you're up. You're not here to talk about weeds.
Yeah, there's one here.
There you go.
We have a weed in the code.
There we go. Good evening. Grab, grab the mic.
Oh, yes, my name is Judy King, and I am, you know, one of the greatest privileges we have in the United States is the right to vote, and we are being denied the right to vote the way the code is mentioned here. So I am for this, the changing the code so that we have the right to vote. Doesn't mean we're going to win, but we have the right to vote. So I urge you to pass this. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Charles, you wish to not speak? John Eckler? Okay, Rick Ash? And then anybody else who hasn't signed up, please come and get with Ms. Millard. Good evening.
Good evening. I just want to say that I'm very much in favor of amending chapter 2.52 of the municipal code for the aforementioned reasons. As right now, we all know that this has been brought forward because of the delays in getting the strategic growth initiative in getting the Strategic Growth Initiative to the citizens. Regardless of how you think or what you believe about that Strategic Growth Initiative, the bigger picture here is that the citizens of Lakewood are being denied the chance to vote, yea or nay, on the matter. And that's just plain wrong. The, it, it's important to point out that changing this, this part of the code would not take away a citizen's ability to appeal any initiative that is brought forward, either whether presently with the Strategic Growth Initiative, but any other initiative that will certainly be brought forward at some point in the future. The citizens have the right to vote on this, and it's just the right thing to do. And our citizens look to you folks to do what's right for the citizens. So, I strongly urge you to, to support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenore? Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Lenora Herskowitz, and it seems ironic to me that this is one of the last items on the agenda since waiting has been the norm for the past year and a half regarding this issue. It's unfortunate that the deliberate effort of a few has attempted to squelch the voice of the many. And hopefully, tonight, you will take the first step towards rectifying this injustice and preventing further ones in the future. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Ms. Kettner? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Kathy Kettner, co-petitioner of Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative. But I'm not here tonight to talk about the growth initiative. Tonight, the subject is the people's right to petition and vote. Initiative, referenda, and recall are necessary checks and balances on you, our legislators, when you let things get out of hand. When the government isn't responsive, we, the people, have little recourse. Petitioning through the initiative, referendum, and recall is often the only option. But the Lakewood Municipal Code currently takes away this constitutional right by keeping issues off the ballot when any appeal, as meritless as it may be, is filed. This allows big money interests to control access to our constitutional rights. In fact, the last two petitions which garnered enough signatures, a referendum on the rezoning of 2090 Wright Street and the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative, were held off the ballot by legal maneuvering because some elected officials didn't want them to go to a vote. This allows big money interests to control access to our constitutional rights. There is little, and perhaps nothing, that Mark Gruskin, the preeminent Democrat attorney on election law, and Scott Gessler, the preeminent Republican attorney on election law, and former Colorado Secretary of State have agreed upon throughout the years. But they are in agreement currently in the opinion that the section of code you are considering to repeal is likely unconstitutional. What you are considering tonight, as Mr. Ash mentioned, does not change the appeal process. It brings our code in process to constitutional compliance. It lifts an unconstitutional restriction to initiative, referenda, and recall. And it removes a provision that allows big money interests to control access to our constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I will now close public comment and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance. Thank you. I move for the adoption of ordinance 0. 219-5 on second and final reading.
Second at.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mayor Protem, you do speak?
I do. This ordinance, this repeal and replacement changes nothing, as was said earlier, about the appeals process. It merely lifts a limitation that council placed on itself some years ago. It did so and remained in force, even though in November of 2010, Lakewood voters defeated some charter issues that would have required just doubling the time that these things be placed on the ballot from 90 days to 180. But in fact, that proposal that finally went to a charter vote began its life as a request to have initia and referenda considered only in November elections. That removes the privilege of a timely vote on initiative and referenda. Also, as was pointed out by Ms. Kettner, in the transcript of a hearing on the current initiative, which again, is not at issue here, the ordinance came up. The Judge Diego Hunt was concerned that he had dismissed the case in early November, and yet, it didn't, the ordinance did not appear on the ballot. I'm sorry, he had dismissed the case in August, and it hadn't been to the ballot yet. He was informed that it was because of this particular Lakewood city ordinance that seems peculiar to only a couple of cities in the state. And in that September 27th hearing before Judge Hunt in District Court, Mr. Gruskin said, "It is the city's position that particular, this particular limitation may not be applicable to the District Court case, and in fact, may not be constitutional in light of the fundamental right of initiative." Those are direct quotes from an attorney appearing on behalf of the city and an attorney who is well-recognized in his knowledge of constitutional law and election law. It also seems to go against the grain of the city charter, which says that the clerk must bring these things to us within 90 days. And it says, "Council cannot pass ordinances that conflict with that in any way." But yet, we did. In 2004, we placed the limitation on putting these things to the ballot as long as an appeal or protest is underway. It says nothing about the quality of that appeal. What we're doing tonight would remove the limitation from council, but it would allow anyone to go ahead and file an appeal. But in doing so, they would have to prove their argument has merit and request the judge remove it from the ballot. Otherwise, it would remain on the ballot, and we would be able to vote in a timely fashion. So, I urge my colleagues on council to please approve this and restore the right to initiative in Lakewood.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Bida?
Thank you, Mary. Mayor, and I, I, sorry about that. Sorry about that, Mayor.
Adam and Eve, Mary.
It was a slip. Freudian slip. I just would say that I appreciate Councilman Abel's assistance on, on this. We worked on this together, and I appreciated his assistance. And I'm going to be voting for this for all the reasons that have already been stated. I don't think they need to be repeated. It's the right thing to do. And so, I urge my colleagues to do so as well.
So, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Yep. Councilor Goode line?
Thank you. I, I will be supporting this. I want to just also acknowledge that we're not voting on the growth cap right now. And I know that some of us have concerns about that issue. But that's not what we're discussing tonight. And I think that it is important that we update our rules so they're fair and so that people can vote when, when we've, they've met the requirements. So, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Council Laber?
I would just echo what all my colleagues have said and just mentioned. I know I've had some residents approach me with some concerns about repealing the stay. And, and, you know, I understand their perspective, but I also think we all benefit from having a right to the ballot. So, I look forward to voting in support of this.
Okay, and then, we will go back. One more thing I just wanted to re-mention that some folks were able to weigh in online. We appreciate that. And so, there's more public comment to this, and you can go to Lakewood Speaks, which was actually really helpful. So, as our first night to kick off, I appreciate the folks that weighed in online. So, please, cast your votes. That passes 11 ayes, 0 nays. Okay, so, general business, we did have a topic related to Lakewood High School, and there was a request. It was brought forth by Councilor Johnson. And there was a request to pull that for this evening, and spoke with her before. And what I would like to offer council, because there was a mention of this at our annual planning retreat. So, I'd like to have, and I sent out a link of the conversation. And I would encourage council to review that. And I'd like to have us discuss that, if we could, under general business on the 18th. And if there's consensus as to what that was on the 18th, then we can go forward. If not, then we will need to, I don't know what we'll need to do. But that was the request by Ms. Hodson. So, Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Abel and myself decided we wanted to put this out there for us again, because this has been a very contentious issue. And the study session we had, there was ambiguity, frankly, regarding what the outcome was. I asked to have this pulled from the agenda. At this time, the signs that are up on 9th Avenue are working well. They only prohibit students in the evenings and on weekends. I'd like to see, frankly, how this plays itself out. This is the first year that the restriping has happened. And putting those signs up was the right thing. And I absolutely believe that it has made a huge difference in that neighborhood. And I'd also like to just publicly state that if we take the signs down at Lakewood, we need to be looking at Alameda, Green Mountain, and Bear Creek High School as well. Okay? So, I'd like to just see it tabled for now.
So, there still needs to be, there's a request from Ms. Hodson that, that there's a weigh-in on that, on the direction that was given. So, I would ask council to please watch the tape, and we can have that discussion. I'd like to have it March 18th, if that's possible. We're off on the 11th, so it's either the 4th or the 18th. And if we can't get clear consensus from that tape, then we'll have to figure out Plan B. But that is, let's just go with that, please. Okay. Anything else in our general business? Great. So, thank you, council, for all your hard work tonight and your preparation. What we thought would be a meeting that ended on Tuesday morning could very well end before 10:45 tonight. So, thank you very much. And thank you to the community as well for engaging and getting a lot of your questions in prior, and the communication from our, our folks about the vacation rental and Airbnb. Super helpful. And hopefully, we can carry this trend forward. Like to just remind people to please slow down out there, pay attention, use crosswalks, try not to jaywalk. Our roads are somewhat dangerous. And fortunately, we've had a terrible rash of vehicular fatalities, as well as pedestrian deaths. So, whatever we can do to make sure that we're paying better attention. I appreciate staff's effort to put up some signboards and try to encourage people to not text and to slow down and do different things. And then, I had mentioned this before, and I'll get you out the criteria this week about the Complete Count Committee for the 2020 census. And so, there's some criteria that we've put together, as well as what that'll entail to be on the Complete Count Committee, the time commitment, and things along those lines. So, that would be super helpful once I get that out. If you could recommend some names, and we'll start to put that together. So, that's all I have. Mayor Protem?
No report.
Council Harrison?
Might I defer to Councilor Goode line to announce our Ward Five meeting?
Councilor Franks? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. This Saturday is the Ward One meeting at 9:30 at Holy Shepherd Union, Holy Shepherd Union, Holy Shepherd Church. We will be having a legislative update. I'm chairman of the Legislative Committee. And that will be followed by other updates within, folks within this community. And then, we will have an open mic to listen to the folks and hear what's on your mind. Thank you.
Council Bida?
Dare I say thank you again? As I mentioned earlier, we had over 200 people at our ward meeting on Saturday very concerned about White Fence Farm. And so, we sure appreciate all there coming out to talk to us about that. And we're gonna be taking the information that we got from that and going forward, you know, with our staff providing you that. I want to say thank you to Kara for her presentation on the White Fence Farm and also on the planning process. The meeting was a little contentious at times, and she did a very good job of standing in there and holding her ground and, you know, explaining to people how things work. So, so she did a great job, and we really appreciate it. Also, to our two officers, whose names I'll not mention, who also came and gave us a presentation on our least favorite topic, which is crime in Lakewood. But they did a great job, and I thought they were gonna get a standing ovation there for a while. They were, they were, the, the folks were so pleased with them and just love them. I thought they were gonna get a standing ovation. They were that excited. So, thank you to them and, and to all their colleagues for keeping us safe.
Council Vincent?
No report.
Council Laber?
No report.
Council Skilling?
It'll be a good one. March 5th is our next Development Dialogue Committee meeting. It has been announced last week. It is now posted online. I believe the agenda should be up there. March 5th, 6:00 p.m., upstairs in our usual room. The topic will be parking, Part Two. And we have many, many topics to go through in that two-hour timeframe. But look forward to seeing everyone there.
Council Goode line?
Thank you. Two quick announcements. One is that our ward meeting, our Ward Five meeting is gonna be this Saturday, March 2nd, at 9:00 a.m. And we're at a different location. We're gonna be at Westwoods Community Church. And our topic is community gardens in Lakewood. So, I think it's gonna be a great topic. And then, of course, we will do council update and community concerns and questions. So, please join us. And again, it's at Westwoods, not at our regular location. And then, I quickly wanted to update all of you about our last Dr. Cog meeting. The main thing we talked about was just getting an overview on all of the different potential, what we're gonna do about transportation, because the ballot measures failed last November. And so, there's just, since Dr. Cog deals primarily with transportation, we just discussed what the, what the options are and what the governor is looking at doing and various other groups. So, nothing in the works yet. But of course, it's an important conversation as we continue to deal with traffic issues throughout the Denver metro area.
And Dr. Cog is the Denver Regional Council of Governments.
Thank you.
Council Royball?
Well, I think my co-counselor pretty much said it all. We had a robust meeting here, our Ward Three meeting Saturday, and it was really a good discussion. And we kept it very simple. Conversation came out. We kept our tempers down, and everybody was somewhat happy when we left. So, that's all I have to report.
I, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. I would like to make a plug for the quarterly breakfast. And it's on March 7th, and it's with the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the municipalities. This is a breakfast that typically, we don't have great participation from our elected officials, frankly. from our elected officials, frankly. And at this meeting, again, it's March 7th, and it's at the county building, the city managers will be rolling out the whole, the program that we're proposing for the homeless initiative. So, and I've talked to you about that a few times, especially at our last planning session. So, if you can make it, that'd be great. It's at 7:30 in the morning, and it's at the county building. And it's the quarterly breakfast with the county commissioners, as well as the municipalities, elected officials. So, please come if you can. Thank you.
And I want to thank Ms. Hodson for her hard work on this. She's led the charge. For the record, Mayor Protem Abel and I do attend that meeting. So, we don't want to get called out.
Forgive me for that, but there are 11 of you, and I'd love to see about 10 and a half.
And a half. I'll be the half. All right. Anything else? Like to thank our police agent. Also, like to thank a special guest who's here with us tonight, the mayor of Thornton, Ms. Mayor Heidi Williams. Thanks for coming out and hanging out with the city Lakewood tonight. With that, we are adjourned at 10:33 p.m.